All right, so we have bills or anything that have to go through?
Yep, you have a bill.
We have, um...
It says...
Payroll.
Yep, payroll.
We have payroll in the amount of $4,080. Make it easy.
I think we can mostly approve the payroll.
Second.
Oh, thank you.
Aye.
So, um, every year, we, um... One of us represents the board at the CMRTC, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We send a delegate and they attend the meetings there. Jean has been doing it for years now. So, what do we just nominate her to?
Yep.
And she wants, and she already wants to do it.
Yep, yep.
She's volunteered.
Do we have a motion to nominate Jean to represent us at the CMRTC? Or she'll be the delegate for the year again?
I'd make a motion to have Jean represent us.
Second.
On my favor.
Aye.
Now, the town also can have an alternate. If someone would like to be an alternate in case Jean can't make a meeting, someone else could go and vote in place.
Would anybody like to?
How often are the meetings and where are they?
So, she's really good about attending most of them.
She does.
So, what would, it would be, it'd be an alternate in case she didn't attend?
There are quarterly meetings and then there are committee meetings that meet, like monthly or so.
Okay.
Is this some special, like, banquets sometimes?
Yes, there's an annual dinner.
Sure, I can be an alternate.
Like this motion that Dawn be the alternate, delegate?
On my favor.
Aye.
Uh, um... I just, I have, um... Should I just read this or? No.
Uh, Seth, please.
I guess I'll give it to you. This is just a letter from, um, Rodden Craver. Just kind of congratulating you, um, for becoming a co-member of the board.
Okay, thank you.
So, your appointment goes until next...
All right, one more and then we'll get to the agenda. We have a... Do we vote on this?
Yes.
We have, um, a departmental request to transfer funds within the budget for the fiscal year 2019. We want to, uh, transfer from account, the planning director's salary account, to the consulting services account in the amount of $23,100. Um, it's gonna cover Bill's consulting fees while we're looking for a new planner.
I'd mostly approve the transfer of $23,100 from the planning director's salary account to the interim planner's salary account.
My second motion.
On my favor.
Aye.
I thank you. In 7:05, we have a continued, um, public hearing for, uh, C-Tech Solar.
Everybody was here last month when we were here, so I didn't necessarily want to rehash everything.
Would you introduce yourself?
Yep, sorry. It's Brad, my name's Brad Parsons, uh, with All Points Technology Corporation, project manager and, uh, professional engineer, uh, on the C-Tech solar project at 299 Worcester Road. Again, we were here last month, kind of went over the project. I think at the end of the meeting, it was requested that we come back with some visual analysis to show what we were looking at here. We have some eight and a half, eleven foot that I can pass to you guys. So, you have them to look at a little bit closer if need be. But up here, um, you know, in talking with Kurt, he was looking for visual analysis from two points. Uh, one point being along Carroll Hill Road looking south. Uh, this is the existing photo. Here, the first one in your packet, is Carroll Hill Road looking south. And the second photo here is what we would see with that vegetation removed and the white vinyl fence installed. Uh, also, as requested, uh, we're installing the plantings every 20 feet on center to help break up the mass of the, the white vinyl fence itself. The second photo location was from Worcester Road. We didn't quite get up as close to that turn signal as possible just because of the traffic and everything and, uh, but we were up kind of in that intersection there. This is the photo here today, as it looks today. And then here's the photo as, uh, you would see it in the future. So, we do have, you can kind of just barely see it over the top of the existing white vinyl fence that's there for CrossFit, but our, our vinyl fence is there, um, the eight foot. And you can kind of just see part of the solar array, obviously, just over the top of that, um, there from the road. Again, it's really gonna be mainly visible for traffic sitting at the stoplight, fully turned, looking left, and then, uh, anybody obviously parked at the stoplight, um, heading north, making either a left or right onto Route 20.
Bud, what's the height of that existing fence?
I believe that existing fence, if I remember correctly, is six feet. I was out there standing next to it, um, and it was about my height, so.
And proposed fence?
Our proposed fence behind it is eight feet, but just the way the grade kind of drops down a little bit before going back up is kind of where we lose that. We can only just see a little bit of our proposed fence over the top of it.
So, coming down the hill eastbound? You don't have those pictures?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna see, it's kind of gonna be the same general view that you're seeing here.
The elevation's a little bit higher.
The elevation's a little bit higher, so you will be looking down, but in order, the, kind of the angle that you're looking at that, you really only would be looking at it if you're kind of at the stoplight and kind of just looking around in the general direction there, um, just the way Route 20 kind of comes down and around the corner. Uh, but yes, it, you will still have that kind of same little bit of visibility there. I mean, we've done pretty much whatever we could to try and mask as much of it as possible. And that's kind of where, where we are. I mean, it, short of going and putting in a 25-foot fence on, you know, behind here, I mean, we're really not going to be able to do that once we start going up with our fence here. Now, we start running into shading issues on the solar array itself, which would cause us to probably look at pushing back more, which then causes us to take down more trees and, um, so.
Can I hold the radio for a moment?
Yeah, I mean, and that's what, you know, we, that's why we came in with it right away, 'cause we, we do understand that it does provide that, one immediate screening, um, on things. And I think really, you can kind of, I would say, even just coming down Carroll Hill Road, I would say that it just, you know, overall, it's an improvement there along, along the existing road as well.
How about any vegetation in front of that to get a little bit more height on that?
I mean, we're showing these here as how...
I'm referring more from, from the Route 20 viewpoint. I think that's pretty well blocked the view. It's just, you've had, you know, kind of a mandate from the citizens in town to hide these as much as possible and really block the view from, from the public to, to keep the rural character of the town. So, can some, like, other plant, arborides or some sort of hedge that's a little bit higher than the six-foot fence or the eight-foot fence? Maybe 10 feet?
It's gonna be, it's eight feet, right?
Right, it's eight foot.
Yeah, maybe something topped at 10 feet that goes right along the front?
I mean, I would, I would say, even if we went to 10 feet, just overall scale.
Yep.
You know, we're really only getting that much more, you know, coverage there.
Do you think that, um, if there's a couple of low-growing whatever, um, green arboride, even if it's about that, that it'll just take the focus off of a white fence with the black solar panels in the back?
Look less industrial?
So, I, I get it, 'cause we don't, we're trying to, we're trying to just kind of feel our, feel this out.
Understood.
And I, I think having you move the whole thing back is kind of, because we want big trees.
It's a little counterintuitive, right?
But maybe some, some, whatever, some, 'cause it's not so close up on 20 where the salt's gonna kill everything, right? It's kind of, it's central, there's a, there's a parking lot area right back there, so.
Right, so, so the concern to... I guess it depends on where those get planted?
Right in front of the, kind of in front of the...
It's asphalt, though, isn't it?
It's asphalt, so it would actually need to be...
Yeah, I'd have to go out and really look. I think it does run, ends up being asphalt almost right up to the area there.
So, I was thinking some, like, shrubs with whatever, just to kind of take the eyes off of, so when people come down and say, "Oh, look at the pretty..." Again, just, just thinking to, to make our residents happy.
Are you suggesting more along the road as opposed to along the fence?
I think the...
I think around the road, you're gonna block the view. You're gonna, you're gonna block.
I think in, in close to the road, everything gets killed because of the salt, too, at least what I've seen, so I'm just...
So, Madam Chair, if I might, I, and I'm, you know, I work with, and I've forgotten your name right, right, on this, you know, trying to get to a presentation. I just had two thoughts. And I understand the shading issue, right? The, Paul, if we put anything in front of it, it impacts their solar panel. One question would be, is if they took their eight-foot fence and replaced the six-foot fence, that might, you know, give you a little more...
It would give us a little more.
Because that's up higher on the hill and that's a...
Oh, I thought that that picture was already the eight-foot.
No, it's, you just kind of see, if you almost look at your... You have to look here a little once and you can see another fence behind it. Okay, so their fence behind it really isn't doing much.
Right, other than screening the view as you come through Carroll Hill. That's really where it, it kind of screens that entrance.
And it looks, I mean, everybody likes trains better, but instead of a chain link, the vinyl around down Carroll Hill, that's, it's, that's much better. We just, I just, every time a resident drives up there, stands at that light, they don't like what they see, we're gonna get a complaint and an email saying, "Look, look what you planning boy did," so.
After we told you not to.
Right, so, we just wanna, and we, we have a moratorium and you still let it happen. So, we're just trying to balance, right?
Sure.
We're just trying to have a good balance between not giving you, not being super burdensome, burdensome and making other people happy, so.
The other suggestion I might have, and I, the same thing, it's like, okay, well, how tall can you build a fence? But we, um, it occurred to me that there was another applicant in here, um, previous, that was gonna put two feet of mafia concrete blocks, right? But, so, if you put two feet of concrete blocks along your driveway, you get, or two stacks, you write a couple more feet, you just, you gotta work your shading issue without building a 10-foot fence.
Right, right.
Even, uh, I don't know if it costs, the lattice along the top or something else just to get you a little bit, does that, you know?
The thing, the thing that, that we'll never do is if you sit here at the stoplight waiting to make a left turn, you will never get short of a 25-foot fence.
Yeah, and I, that's just, that's crazy. What do you got, I mean?
Yeah, I agree, just, I mean, I see, I didn't, I missed the last one. Trying to see the initial, but the vinyl has a nice touch to it. But if they can just make it a little, is what, it's six foot? Does that show the six foot now?
That's the six foot.
So, this, this is, this is the six foot up front here?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think we, I mean, there is one, one tree planted there. I can't, honestly, I wish I would remember where it is.
There's a little, you know, off-white color behind it, but it's the, the...
Yeah, that may even be on the line. Is there a driveway there or is there?
There is.
Even if, I mean, by looking at this, even with the eight foot, you're gonna see a little, see a little bit.
Without a doubt, you're always gonna see it.
We don't mark those big trees. And if, and if one, is that tree already there?
That tree's there, that little tree is actually already there right now.
So, like, if you have those low-growing...
What, boxwoods or whatever?
Yeah, whatever, those low-growing tree, I mean, I have, like, the, the...
Slow-growing arborides or something like that.
They have a big cherry in my yard. And it just, it's thick and then it comes and it just looks nice? And I'm not saying...
Same landowner, too, right?
Yeah, if you, excuse, I'm, I'm only looking at my phone because I thought I had the actual plans here. I just wanted to look in there if I was gonna just kind of see if I had a grass strip in front of this existing fence.
I didn't know if that was just part of the picture, but...
No, it is actually, if you look here, oh, just a little back, you guys can see the, the existing as it is today.
Because maybe that will solve the problem and it's permanent, 'cause the fence can come down and the trees will look nice and give somebody a good sight line.
Your shade line would be in the driveway.
Right, once, if, if we did anything in front of this fence here, the shade line would not, it wouldn't be an issue for us where you've got between our fence, the existing fence here and, and our fence, you've got the CrossFit yard behind that.
Oh, so...
So, there is some space between our fence and that. So, I'm, if we were to do some, have to add anything, I would probably look at and try and add it here in the front.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, very right.
You know, in, in order to do that, or maybe even just behind the fence. And for whatever reason, I, we don't have any area to work with here without cutting pavement and messing up with their access drive as it is today. I don't know how, what the availability is. We'd have to talk to the landowner and just confirm him. He is going to be the ultimate owner of this, um, facility, too. So, um, I think we can, that's something I can bring back and just discuss that.
The trees in front, it's not on that.
So, and replace the fence with an eight foot? Get another two feet up to block it?
Honestly, if we're gonna have them at the expense of some trees in there, I don't, do you want to increase that? Because I don't, we're still gonna see the panels.
You're still gonna see the panels, but not as much. You're gonna be blocking some part of it, at least across the town.
I mean, it's, I really think it'll be, it'll be mini... Minimal enough that, from a cost standpoint, to rip down a fence that was probably just installed three or four years ago, to then, you know, I think being amenable to planting some things in front of here, still keeping our vinyl fence behind here, you know, screening as folks are coming up Carroll Hill Road.
Because, I mean, if you look, if this is six feet and you put it in half of this to be, if you add two more feet, you're still gonna see a couple of rows of panels anyways. I think the trees will just take your, take the focus off the panels and...
Break up on maps a little bit.
Make, just kind of...
Make them look less industrial and a little bit...
Right, that's, um, we obviously want that. So, we want trees, do we need, do we need to define?
What type of trees?
Species and all that, I just don't, I just, I want to kind of get everything...
Wasn't there a list in our, uh, do we have it on subdivision?
I believe there is.
Yeah, I think, cut off that list, okay?
Okay.
If that makes sense?
Okay. What about to the, to the right of that building, you're looking at it? Is there, is there an opening to the back fields on that side?
There is a slight opening back there as well. To be honest with you, I don't have a, I believe it is not the white vinyl fence like here. It is the...
It's a chain link there.
The chain link on that side there. What the visibility is there, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's like two cha, there's a pen.
I know they do.
Two chain link fences and sometimes they have some jumble gym-like equipment there.
It gets, it gets pretty small as you, as you get back over there. It's, it's a lot more narrow. And then you've got some of that vegetation that comes all the way up, all the way to Route 20. You've got the riverfront buffer, uh, right there.
Sure, but there's about 50 feet of visibility from the road that goes back into that.
Jean, we must, we have the original submittal here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on...
Do we want to do a white vinyl fence on that side, too, just to...
Well, that's why I wanted you to, you know, wanted you to look at the plan because it shows the visibility and sight.
Yeah.
So, really, you're...
So, you've got a sight line, 'cause this is, this is swampland, this is the road. The tram line is over here.
Yeah, but this, and this area is kind of filled in, though, a little bit with, with growth as well. So, I mean, you do, I would deny that you do have a slight sliver through, through this section here.
So, anybody that stopped at that light?
They won't see it at that light, I don't see it at that light.
Well, it would be, if you're, if you are, if it is queued up to the point where you're back here, I couldn't tell you that you're not gonna possibly see a little bit heading this way as well.
Anyway, you could possibly carry the vinyl just past the, uh, the building?
Or to this corner?
I mean, given the nature of Route 20, though, is that really necessary?
Yeah, no, I hear you, 'cause then the other side's Carroll Hill Road, which is residential.
I think Carroll Hill Road side is the more sensitive area.
Yep, yep, absolutely, there.
Well, you already, I mean...
I mean, I would, from our, I, from, I mean, we, we understood the sensitivity of the nature of coming in there and that's why we proposed that white vinyl fence right off the bat for everybody. But I, I do understand that concern and looking at this here, um, oh, perfect. Looking at this here, the, that, um, fence does butt right up against this. That tree, I think, is probably like right in here, that small little one, is actually up in this area here. Um, so, I would really have to, I guess, before I can, seeing this now and how this access works, before committing to saying we could plant anything here, I, I can't make that decision without discussing that with the owner because that's ultimately gonna affect the existing business that's there.
And this is all asphalt, all the way up?
The only thing, yeah, I mean, the only thing I could look at is we've got a good distance. I've got 15 feet here. I could get something in here, like in this area.
But that would be behind the fence?
But it would be, no, it would be behind this fence, but in front of our arrays a little bit.
But you couldn't get it high enough to block the arrays?
I'm not gonna, I'm never gonna get anything high enough to block the arrays. I think that's it. At the end of the day, I'm, I'm never gonna get something in the way the topography here heads up this way. I, I can never fully shield the arrays from the public, from the, from view.
Well, you could with some sort of hedge, but I'm not sure it's, it's worth it for Route 20. I think I, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would have to be, it would probably have to be in the neighborhood of...
We'll save that for something.
But I, I, I understand the concern, I understand where the board is on this and, you know, obviously, we're, we're here now in the middle of everything, too, so.
It looks better than it was then.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the vinyl should be the standard, we like that.
Good.
Um, I think the last couple things...
Bud, would you just summarize?
Yeah.
For the record, what, what can you intend to do?
Well, I guess the question, I, I would still say, from a planting, from an anything additional standpoint, looking at what we have now availability-wise, I, I couldn't commit to the, doing any other plantings other than behind the existing vinyl fence that's there, without having, without having to go back to the owner and then ultimately possibly come back to, which I really would prefer not to do.
Can you call him? Can we, can we put you on?
I mean, the other option is if, if we want to take...
Can we just hold it and then open it back up? Can you, do you want, I mean...
We'll make it a condition.
Well, you can't because if he doesn't know what they're saying, no, we're...
Well, let me suggest this. If there is space behind the existing white vinyl fence, arboride is not the right plant. Some sort of maple that has a top to it?
Yep.
Will we leave the list of our, our trees?
Right, but that... Yeah, I think that, or something of that nature.
So, that you have a stalk that's behind the fence and you get that breakup of the, the thing and it's gonna be appealing, it's not gonna cause the client to move the fence and get into all sorts of asphalt work.
And by that, too, I wouldn't be necessarily infringing on the space of the CrossFit itself that's using that space. I think that was, that's really more my concern, I don't want to put...
Okay, so we'll, we'll consider that as a condition.
And you guys agree?
Yeah, and then I think we just, we would have to, you know, if we, if I have an issue or we run into an issue with that, obviously, we would have no choice but to come back to you in some fashion, but I have no problem taking that as a condition there. Um, I think, you know, if amenable, you know, looking at this, I would think, you know, either two red buds or two dogwoods or something, you know, more of a flowering type or, you know, tree that's gonna get some decent height there, too.
Perfect, yeah.
Um, I, I don't think we have any, any issues or concerns with that. You know, and we'll look to, I mean, we can even spec out, if we want to get to the point of specing, you know, size, I think we can, we can try and look for something as in the, you know, eight-foot realm that's there for now. You know, still being a, you know, younger tree, but that'll, you know, mature and grow quicker. I'll, I'll review these and see which one grows the fastest as well, so.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, all right, and then, just to go over the couple other minor items from Graves Engineering report that they had. Um, we do have a copy of the notarized letter. I apologize, that should have been in the submittal. I can give you a few copies there.
Good.
Bill?
I had this already sent it in.
I thought, I thought, I thought we had it, had sent it in. Um, the, I have no problem, we can update the description of the existing plans. I, I think we were looking back at the most, it being the junkyard, I think that's where that auto rep came from. And then the knockbox, I did reach out to the fire department. I hadn't heard back from them yet. I have no problem with conditioning that it either be a knockbox or a padlock. If we need to do the knockbox, that's fine, it's just that they're more suited to be drilled into a building than they are to be mounted elsewhere, so.
I just inspected another, um, solar facility that the fire department had been out on and we are, they are allowing, um, padlocks.
Padlocks, okay. Um, so we would propose the padlocks and I want to say we added it, yeah, it's already on the plant with the model number as well. And then, the last piece is we can add a note somewhere, whether it's to the survey or to our existing conditions notes about who did the A&R survey. I thought it was clear, just, yeah, I thought it was clear based on the, um, their sheet, but that's, we can do that. I don't know if we could put it into a condition in regards to the wells. We've been trying to get in touch with the owner to understand a little bit more who actually owns them, who's responsible for them. I think it is our intent that they need to be accessed, we know that. We have no problem providing the access and then being able to get in there at all times. So, even if that's listed as a, an order of conditions.
So, their environmental testing wells, are they, are they still being tested or are they properly abandoned?
I would assume, I, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the answers to all that. I've been trying to get in touch with them to get a little more information on that. It is not a 21E site, I did double-check that, and it's not a 61A either, but the wells are there. Um, the, actually, even the site across the street is not a 21E site either, yet.
They closed those out?
They might, I, they, they may have, it just wasn't on the Oliver website.
So, I guess that, that's a question, if they haven't been, you know, officially properly abandoned and sealed, it's still a potential contamination of groundwater in there. Is that something that, Kurt, is that something that we follow up on or is that DEP?
I could, um, reach out to a consultant that the town uses for their environmental work and see what he can tell us. It's Gary Magnuson, CMG, I don't, he does work for the town of Charleston. He's on, on board, he's, he's our LSP for some highway garage issues, so.
Yeah, again, we have no problem with conditioning it that, you know, that they be, that whoever needs access to it has access to it.
Or, or they're properly abandoned.
Or they're properly abandoned.
Just, just, uh, add it as a condition that, that there has to be some sort of, we just need to know, I mean, clearly, there needs to be access and stuff, but that, that that's kind of closed up, that we don't just leave it as an open loop.
Yep, okay. And then lastly, um, Graves was just looking for confirmation that the, um, National Grid was going to own, uh, the line heading out to the street. Again, it's 95% sure, not being the electrical engineer and having that final thing, I think we can confirm that as part of the building permit process when the electrical plan would be submitted. And at such a time, I think if an easement was needed across, um, Carroll Hill Road, we could go that route. However, I've, I've never seen the utility company not have their point of demarcation on property. So, next, the array. Other than that, everything else has been, um, acknowledged as addressed.
Bill, do you have anything else?
No, I was looking at my letter and I think Brad addressed some of the issues there.
We want to...
Discussion.
Any comments?
Um, do we have any comments from the public?
Okay, make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
On my favor.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to, um, approve with all the conditions that we just discussed? Which, the wells, trees?
Fence.
Fence.
Well, it's, yeah, the usual solar conditions. Are the other codes of the solar, yeah?
Um, the, is there a take-down, a removal by...
Uh, we do require that in, uh, agricultural residential districts, in which this is an agricultural district, but it's only a 20, so it's actually what we want to require a, a decommissioned bond for this one.
Um, aye.
I think we need to do that for, for any, just...
I think so, since there's even a box car, I don't like.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion to approve for adding?
Make a motion and we put this with the additional requirements.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep. I can leave this for you guys to just to get you one of those examples going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You helping us set the scan.
Aye, not a problem. Okay, anybody here for the public hearing? Are we doing the pets, public hearing for pets? If anybody here, citizens can sign, sign in. Oops, sorry. No, go ahead.
The past seven fifty. In accordance with sections two hundred dash seven point one and two hundred dash seven point two of the Charlton zoning by law, the Charlton planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August eighth, two thousand and eighteen at seven fifteen. On the application of the Ted Group LLC, P O Box nine ten, Charlton City, Mass. For a modification of a site plan approval granted to Ted's package store construct day sixteen, hundred square foot accessory garage associated with Ted's package and variety store and demolition of two single family homes. The property is located at twenty-seven Worcester Road, Charlton, Mass. and is listed in assessment map twenty-seven B, block A, lot seven. Said property contains approximately two point two acres and its own, um, community business. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and the town clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the, um, time and place designated.
Deputy, my name's Dave Feist with the Corps of Engineering, I'm the site's project engineer. With me tonight also is Ted Terrick with the Ted Group LLC. Just to give you a sort of brief overview, originally back in two thousand thirteen, Burton Engineering had done a site plan for the project that included a thirty-nine hundred square foot building. It was approved over this corner of the property. They decided not to, to build that. Instead, um, we're here tonight just to amend that, uh, site plan. Instead, I'm gonna go with a much smaller sixteen hundred square foot, uh, two, two bay garage storage building. There'll be accessory building to the existing, uh, store. With that, um, really is, really only minor changes to the site plan that Burton had done. Um, we're, we're providing the ten spaces that were proposed on the early plan. And in addition, there'll be a retaining wall on the edge here. At its highest point, it'll be about five and a half feet. Um, then we'll blend into the side here. Um, there'll be, um, basically, there's one light pole that's here existing, it would be moved over to, to here. And then two wall packs will be placed on the, the garage building. Overall drainage, there's really no changes to the existing drainage system that was installed. The only minor change is there's, um, a single catch basin here. The older plan had another catch basin located, um, up in here because they had the, the parking lot configured differently because of the large building. So instead, we're just basically showing that we could just replace the single grate with a double grate catch basin and it'll still function as it was designed. Uh, we're not increasing the impervious area for the original plan. And we're still showing there were, um, three street trees that were required on the Burton plan that also, um, will remain, uh, will be constructed on this plan. Two existing homes that are to be demolished are in the front area of the site. And the nice part about it, it'll actually sort of open up the front a little better than the other plan would have. Um, whereas the other plan had a retaining wall that wrapped around in this area. Instead, you know, we just have a, a single wall going along the side here, so this can all be landscaped in grass in the front corner of the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also did get a letter from Graves Engineering, um, last, a few days ago, mostly minor comments on some typographical errors and, and most likely, uh, we can have those plans submitted to the town by the end of this week.
Did you wanna show your floor about your plan that you submitted down?
Yep. Yeah, just one of the other requests we met, um, with O L, Bill and Mike DeAndre. Um, and just to make sure that, um, we'd work an impact of the, moving the light pole closer to the road. Uh, we basically had another photometrics plan done, um, basically taking into account sort of this half of the property. Um, there's existing light poles, they're here at the corner, um, wall packs on the building and some lights that are here. Here, the only one that moves is, uh, this pole up here. Um, and basically, we're showing, you know, zero to zero point one foot candles along the property line, very similar to the, what the whole of plan had shown. So there's no, um, you know, dark sky compliant lights and they won't spill over the property.
Do you have, uh, visual renderings of the, what the garage will look like?
I know Neil, Neil Dixon and Salo, architects, um, the architects that did the plans. Um, this is, um, part of the plans is basically sort of an elevation view, just very simple, um, you know, garage building, um, no rail windows or anything. Will not have any sort of bathroom or anything on the inside, um, so no utilities are necessary other than electricity.
It is the same gray clapboard siding that we currently have now with the same architectural shingles that are currently.
Which is the view along that side street?
It's a lot bright.
Yeah, I believe it's this one here, yep, you can see here's the wall and here's the side.
So we facing, the graduate facing your twenty?
Yes.
Doors?
The doors are facing right.
What kind of landscaping are you proposing as part of this expansion, anything?
Um, really, I know, I think, um, basically, there's some shown on the Burton plan. But really, there's not a lot of room along this side here, which the street trees that were proposed on the original Burton plan. Um, and I would imagine they probably have some landscaping up in the front just to dress it up, but it was mostly low stuff though, to make sure there was visibility to the building as well as not impede any site distances around the corner.
Is there anything specific on Graves that, that, that we can?
Um, just on, uh, page two, number seven, uh, Mike writes, D D, I understand that the Apple has requested waivers on the preparation of a landscape plan and traffic study for the site plan modification. We will request, et cetera, which should be addressed by the planning board. Here, I don't, don't think we need any kind of traffic study for this.
No, definitely no traffic study.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna see some additional landscaping or whether you're comfortable with what, what can be shown. Ever had a plan approved?
I'm pretty comfortable with landscaping because it always looks so nice, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I, I just can't imagine you're gonna make it, make it a mess and, and not, and not match what's already out, out there, right?
It's kind of our crown jewel now, having the corner when you come down twenty, which we didn't have before. Our, weren't really proud of the houses that currently are there, so it's, it'll feel a little easier to do.
What's that?
That's a, it will prove the site length of the story.
Now, you mentioned you're gonna demolish a couple of homes, and that's, that lot, where are those now?
Probably basically sit right here and right here.
Questions, do we wanna, do we have any public comments?
Would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve the modify, site plan modification for Ted, uh, package and variety.
How's that?
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, is there anything there that we don't have that you presented tonight?
Uh, no, actually, we'll, we'll submit, um, the replies, plan for Graves letter, just for correcting those couple of things, so we'll have a full package.
Continue up.
Sure.
I guess we'd sort of like an update on, on, um, the progress of that. I know the board had hoped that that would be completed last year, but it still seems to be ongoing. I'd like to know.
Well, we got a lot of progress done last year.
Okay.
And this year, it's the same thing, but it's still continuing building and, um, the plan is the sidewalks will be in this fall. Curvings are, I have another subdivision, we put the curvings in and they're kind of destroyed now, so it's really a call, but we'll put them in now. I'd like to get the curvings in and paved and there's only a few houses left, so keep progress. All the retention points are fenced in. The guardrail people put their guardrail in the corner, it's scheduled for September. And, uh, you know, we wanna start cleaning up everything here on that.
So how long do you think it'll take you to, to wrap this up now?
I can't give you that exactly.
You mentioned that the guardrails are going to get in September?
Yes.
So what else would need to be done after that?
Well, we're gonna dig for the sidewalks, get those prepped, get those paved, and then it's a matter of putting up curvings and paving the road. Until all construction's done, the bank will not let me pave the top over.
Okay.
That's the weight of the trucks and everything else.
Um, please, why don't you?
That's my goal, yes. But it's also because of the size of it, I paved the road in Sturbridge last year and they keep saying they'll be there and then they show up in December and say, they give you a rate for that. If it doesn't work, it's not our fault because they're taking care of me in a spell, so that's just something I run into. But I will stay on them, I can get your definite dates if that helps.
Definite dates would be helpful. I mean, it seems like this has been going on for, when, when was the project started? When was it originally supposed to be? I, I, I'm, see, I, I'm new, so I'm trying to figure out, it seems like it's been progressively just being pushed off, pushed off, pushed off, pushed off.
It's after seven years, so I can't remember so good.
Yeah.
I think I've done a lot.
I'm still trying to understand.
No, that's. You mentioned how the bank won't let you put a top coat on until all construction's done.
Well, I would, I wouldn't say all, but I would say the majority.
Well, I mean, how many house lots do you have left out of the twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
We're working on, it's probably five that we're working on.
So you're almost eight to complete?
Sure.
That's.
Well, you know, when it's a med truck or a dump truck and it deals up that asphalt, I have to pay to fix it. And it's, you know, I would rather not have the roads destroyed before we give it to the town.
Right, but the, the thing is, I think from the playing boys' point of view is you have residents that are living there.
Uh-huh.
And they have a concern in their head, is this ever gonna get completed? They said, oh, you know, you don't wanna have that hanging out. It's been going on for a long time. And if you're looking back at the paperwork, as far as an update, I mean, you're back here almost a year ago. And then you can, you did some stuff and then the stuff we released a bond in November, December, and your intention was to complete and have the road ready for that town meeting in May?
No, no, that was never my intention.
I could have sworn that.
No.
That was mentioned?
No, because of, I'm telling you, because the bank has, you know, released that bond in the past and then they continue to work and that road gets destroyed because one is not there, we're there.
So we, we could certainly expect from the town meeting.
Yes.
Road acceptance process?
Yes. What type of acceptance?
I don't know. I'd like to put a time limit on some other things, though.
Okay.
I, I'd hate to have it hang out, oh, we're gonna pull a bomb. Because there is a bond amount left. Has Mike, Mike has been out and assessed?
Not since the last time we did that, which was.
December or November.
I think we should expect everything to be on the floor with winter comps because now that's gonna carry over. I, I mean, we just, there needs to be some sort of, um.
Completion progress instead of just starting progress?
It's just so little and, and I, and I know a lot of things get out of, you know, our audio control, but we need to set a date. And I, I hate to be really aggressive on this, but I think we need to, we need to get a little more aggressive to kind of get this to the end of the, end of the game here. Um, we should expect everything to be ready by December and, um.
Curving sidewalks, asphalt.
Because once, once now, you have to wait until, you know, spring, who knows how many, who knows what the weather's gonna be. And then, uh, uh, definitely a progress in the middle there somewhere, so we can. Like, you know, maybe, maybe.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Maybe at.
That, that was my concern was the expected progress wasn't, wasn't happening and it just kept getting delayed and pushed off.
I mean, if it's not, then, then let's, let's say December and then if, if, and then if we need to pull the line on the spring, we, when we do it, then, then we need to do it.
Yep.
So let's, 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 um, come back in December and, and wanna do that and, and so we can go from there.
Yeah, see where we stand, see what.
You're gonna do that? See where I just turned it down?
Mind you send Mike out to do an inspection.
Does anything, Tim, has anything changed since, um, we did the work and we came in and we released that?
We have more, more fencing put in.
Is it, is it worth, is it worth, is there enough out there done that you wanna pay, you wanna pay Graves to go out there and get? Because, you know what I'm saying, because.
Okay. So the, the retention pump fences there?
Weather and heat and everything else, everything's been delayed because I thought the guardrails would be in already.
Cause I mean, I, I'd rather have you spend the money getting, getting it done than, than to have our amble back out, so.
I mean, there's still the, the, the retention pump, there's still the, the dirt, the stumps, the, that's all gone out, okay.
So we'll say, so can we get them, uh, we'll get them December agenda, the internotes and if not done, we'll pull a bomb, right? So.
So I think the board would want, what, ninety percent or ninety-five percent completion by then? Is that reasonable?
Yes, ninety-five percent.
Is that possible?
Albut topcoat?
Um, I cannot guarantee a top coat.
Is it albut?
They wouldn't do the curving unless, till they do the top coat.
Right.
Then that would be smart.
I, you know, I'd love to have that in, it's just, if you see any other curvings, they just cost me more money or maybe they're stopped. I'd rather have it look good, be up to date. When we hand it over to the town, it doesn't look like some of these other subdivisions that you take.
So we say December and we make another decision.
Let's, let's reevaluate this number then.
And if, if, we need to see significant ninety-five percent, um, or we pull and we, we care of it all.
That seems fair.
I'd love to have it paved and, you know, I mean, if I have one more left, that's not wrong to me, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, have a great evening. Before we go? Lisa, did you wanna?
I'm sorry. It's all good.
Sure, sure. It's me? With me? Yes.
Say, correct.
So, Lisa Westwell, I'm here representing Charlton Heritage Preservation Trust and we have the open space. So we just figured, um, when I saw this on the agenda, went out and re-site visited. And best I can tell, nothing that we've asked be done has been done. There's still no signage, the trail's not fixed, um, the open space is not completely down. So the signage in the open space boundary is part of the special permit decision, which, uh, is under the pervy planning board. The rest of it is probably a civil matter between land trust and the planning board. However, considering the issues that we're having with flexible subdivision open space and town in general, I'm not sure what latitude you have to include in, you know, to include the items that are outstanding that we're looking for with, you know, your December deadline for the things.
Do the, do all the things that she was promised.
This is a simple matter, do not bring it up here. Well, I thought we had a deal and they, they extorted more money out of it. So once we did that, things changed, okay? I put everything down that I offered to do for this and that wasn't enough for them, so.
Well, we certainly want whatever was required to try to be set up.
Oh, I understand, set the bounds and anything else, yes.
So, so bounds and, and signs? So bounds, please.
I don't believe, I don't know anything about a sign, that's, could be a simple matter.
I guess we have to review the special permit decision to see what, what that required and how much of that has been completed.
No, I asked, I asked for a smaller portion and it got blown way up and thousands of feet were given because they extorted more out of it. So this is not being discussed here, okay? Thank you very much.
But can we, let's review and if, if the promise is bounds and signs, then that will, if, if that's what was in the original rule, then will you, will you just research that?
Sure.
And see if that was in the original and then add, and we'll shoot him a, a letter to add that to the, to December. If that's what was in the original, we just, we wanna do what.
Make sure that the original site plan is, is followed.
Yeah, and I believe that the signs and the bounds were, were.
Those two things are definitely part of the special permit decision.
But if you can, if, if we can just research that and then send an official letter, then we're good. I just wanna.
Okay, it's, it's C C it to the bank, please, it won't. It's, it's CC it to the bank, please, it won't... I wanna sound, I believe, correct? So if they're aware of the issues that can...
Okay. Did you what?
Oh, I just, I just sent, um, I copied the planning board on just the pictures that I took. Because normally the signage would go up around the trailhead areas to say that it was open space. We can come to some agreement as far as what needs to say. And then, um, this was just to, to document the fact that, that I did go out there and look and that it looks the same as it did the last time I was out there. So, um, yeah, whatever the planning board's comfortable with, we would appreciate any help that you can with some special permit decision, understand that.
So let's review.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I pull through the A and R?
Okay.
Do we have? Yep.
Is there any others?
Yes, A and Rs, okay. So we have two A and Rs, we should go see ya.
We have a note from the building commissioner on this plan as well, which we can take out in a second. But this is showing, this is Muggin Hill Road. Creating a new lot, two hundred, which is only forty-eight acres and has over a hundred seventy-five feet of drainage. And it has access up the monumental road. So it's used to the requirements for endorsement of the A and R plan. It has adequate access for drainage in the area shown on the lot. So, uh, I believe this lot is something the planning board can endorse. And could you give me?
Yeah, she's...
Oh, okay. And so, did you pass that around to the members?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Kurt, just because you're here and you can explain it better than I can read it, will you just, um...
So Bill showed me this plan today and it brought forth where one is an existing zoning violation and the other is now going to be a potential zoning violation. This is an existing lot owned by another family member. And he has a building here and a tractor shed here. They violate the thirty-foot setback requirement from the rear property line. This building is being used by this owner here. It was unknown to me that it was on an adjoining parcel, a much larger parcel. When it gets cut off and brought into its own parcel, it becomes an accessory structure without a principal structure.
What's that mean?
That means that either that becomes a principal structure and it becomes called a commercial garage, and that's zoning violation. Or the structure has to be attached to a principal use such as a single-family home that's not there now.
Just, just, not, not agreeing with you, but you, you, you seen, you seen this?
Yeah.
So it's the two trailers with the tent over it, it's nothing?
It's a structure.
Even though there's no foundation, there's no base, there's no, it's, it's portable, basically.
And how long has it been there?
Since, I, I don't know.
Yeah, so, so, uh, in discussions with Mr. Scanlon, the surveyor said that he pointed this out to some people that might reckon that. And, um, mentioned those violations and the answer was they're temporary. Well, they've been there longer than temporary, which is thirty days.
Well, this one is, is this, this one has nothing to do with the lot?
No, but...
Whether there's a lot there or not, this does, it doesn't matter. This, this particular thing you're talking about, this...
This is, this is an existing zoning violation.
But that's nothing to do with me making the law?
No, no, I think the law, I think two separate issues.
Right, right, that's...
We can create, the board can assign the plan...
Right, this has, this has nothing to do with me.
But it's a zoning violation, which, right?
So where is the current lot line?
Yeah, where is the current?
The current lot line is here.
Okay, and then those two lots are, are one single?
No.
And what are you, what are we trying to do?
We're trying to create this lot by breaking it off from the larger parcel above. So we're adding essentially this, this lot line here, creating this lot.
Oh, oh, because it's all one piece?
No.
This, this is a separate lot. This is a much larger piece.
Right here, I'll draw, oh, there's the big paint on here.
There's the big piece in itself.
That's...
That's an existing lot.
Yeah.
And this is the new lot that's not created. It'll be one forty-eight, four acres. And this is the larger piece that extends up like this. So it goes...
Breaking up that larger piece, is that, larger piece connected to what?
Large piece.
Well, so where's the access, seventy-foot access to it? Or is it fully landlocked at that point?
Yeah.
So once we create this, this lot, the rest of it's landlocked and there is no access?
Well, over here there is, I mean, if you wanna, there is some access in different areas, yes, there is.
So this is what exists today. There's this lot, which is, you know, the one that Kurt outlined, and then a larger piece.
Okay.
Is something like this, and this is an existing lot.
So it could be accessed?
So we're, we're creating a new lot, here's that structure. So that... So that new lot, lot line is coming in behind that structure. Something like that, we...
Okay, I forgot to check.
Okay. Thank you, so, so...
What's, what else will be accessed this summer?
Further down, we're in the center.
Come on, get out.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so there is still, okay, that's what...
And actually over here too, there's a first Dodge Lane is there somewhere. So even there, there's another.
How do we solve the, um, the...
We're just...
Yeah. Look, you know what, I know what we can do.
I think I've been aware of what he has situated.
So he's got some zoning violations, but it doesn't...
As far as...
Do we, do we rule the A and R with the zoning violations?
Put the A and R meets, the A and R rule.
Right, yeah, yeah.
There's a law of A and R that meets that.
And I don't disagree with that. I just had an opportunity to look at a plan today that was coming before you that my quickest avenue of relief was is to notify you that when the applicant came in, that there are zoning issues here.
So we've got one lot that's pre-existing, non-conforming at some point? It was approved?
No, it's, it's, it's a conforming lot. This is a conforming lot.
So the building, sorry, the building...
The building is the violation.
Yep.
And the building is the violation.
So, so that trailer with a, with a roof on it, um, you, you're building, um, some of the house we built and that will be removed and that will take care of it.
Let me tell you, this is, this is all my mother's land and I'm here, she asked me to divide these, to get this done. So I'm doing this, so these, this is my brother here. Now, I, I don't even know if it would solve the problem, but maybe, maybe I need to go back home and not do this and have him, see if he wants to annex this to his, would that solve the problems?
Sure, if you, if you, um...
No, just take this and he, like, say he buys this from my mother and adds it to his lot. So now it would be one big lot. Would that solve the problems?
Well, let me suggest something else.
Okay, all right.
Right, if this lot line went back like this...
Might not be a square plate.
Well, you could, you know, you're, yes, you have to do that math. But that would, this would no longer be the rear line.
Right, yeah, that's...
This would be the rear line.
Yeah.
This is more than thirty feet away.
Right.
So that's complying. As long as this distance here is, is fifteen feet...
What about the different building not having connected and all that?
Well, that...
I see.
That goes away because it's all one lot?
Because accessory on one lot is allowed.
Accessory building to that, to that...
Because, so right now, I had believed, okay, that this was all one parcel.
Right, it looks like it.
It does.
Right.
You know, I mean, you, you put that other driveway in and they put stuff back. Okay, so, wow, wow, okay. Right, so this would be accessory to this.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
If you divide, this building, because it's a garage...
Right.
Is an accessory building to a principal use.
Okay, all right.
So, but we...
Oh, I see, oh, if it doesn't have a principal, then it's the principal.
Right.
Okay.
So maybe that, and you can certainly, they can certainly approve this A and R if you want to. But you could, let's say, approve a lot required under some...
This, this plan is an A and R.
Yeah, that's...
But then you'd have a zoning violation and...
Right, and a problem, yeah, and I don't, he's met me already, so I can't imagine...
So you have to bump this out a little bit if there's not a space. You can always just, kind of bump, bump that up to an angle a little bit more and just start making it...
You know, not that we like to do these things. Like that, you know, so you get your fifteen feet there.
Okay, I know what you're saying, yeah.
All right? Then, then, and this is more than fif, easily more than fifteen feet.
That is, yeah.
And then your brother can keep his...
You know what, it, it, it won't work that way, only because his road is over here too. So it, it'll probably be buy this from my parents, which would work out really nice, and just put it on there.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, I don't, don't know from this plan where that driveway is.
Yeah, it's, it's...
And I'm thinking about it though, it's, it's squished over that line.
Squished over, and he's had all this stuff over here too, and it's, it's...
So I think there's some, maybe some other, yeah. So he could buy this and join it all together or re-divide it in some way that he wanted later on.
He wants to draw. He can, he can withdraw it if he wants to.
You say you can, you can draw it or we can approve it and it'll be nine, it'll...
And then, and then, and then if he, how does that work?
Well, then it's, then it becomes a zoning violation.
I know, but then if he buys it next week?
You'd have to come back for us and...
And then you need to put them together.
Yes.
Well, then he could do that, right? Because then it's somebody else's arrangement. Because if it had to be a surveyor, somebody would have to do all that.
Would that need to come back from the planning board, is that just a...
Yeah, to eliminate lot lines?
Right, to eliminate lot lines, I guess.
Because it's not like it's like a pre-existing non-conforming where it just automatically joins the property next door if it's not, if it's non-conforming, so... So do you wanna take this back and then?
It's up to you.
Come back into the...
We can, we can, we can...
Look, I don't, I don't wanna get my brother in trouble and run him out of business and I don't, and I would love to get this done. So if I have to just do this and wait, I will? I would rather just do it all and come back, but if that's not gonna make you comfortable because it may be a taken care of? I don't know.
We wanna do what, what's gonna be easiest.
I wanna help, I wanna help you guys, you know, not be, because what's, it's not, and I have no ill will, you know that against anybody.
No, I don't.
Is that if the bank sees this, if he goes to refund...
Right.
And the bank sees this, they're gonna pick up on this violation.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna try and fix it then.
Yeah.
And that, that turns...
Yeah, and then someone's already bought this.
Right.
Yeah, see, the reason I wanna keep doing this is, is I'm gonna purchase all this, this back part, this landmark part. So I, so it's just a whole big process that we're trying to pull off and give my parents and, yeah, so that's... So if I can do them both and then tell him what he asked to do, he'll...
So this, and Bill and I noticed this today, has there already been an A and R filed for this?
I have the Mylar all signed, is that what that means?
Yes.
Yes, I have that all signed, it hasn't been recorded yet.
It says to be recorded on the plans.
I have it, I have it all done and all signed.
Well, this one, you know, we were looking to see, and he's here and he knows.
So I was gonna take them all in at the same time.
Is there any expiration on signing of a Mylar?
I don't, I didn't seem to think so, but then...
No, 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 I don't, unless the registry might want a certificate from the town clerk saying it's still in effect. But I don't think the planning board needs to take any further action on that.
I, you know, I just don't want him to get there and have...
Yeah, no, yeah.
And, oh yeah, this is great, but it's too old.
Yeah, so it seemed to think so, but I don't...
So if you've already have an AR for that one plot, do you really, and, and you're gonna do something with this? Do you need this signed or would you rather would try to come back with, with a different plan that puts those two lots together?
Sure, well, you know, you tell me, but I, I guess maybe you'd have a better idea of what I'm gonna run most trouble with. I wanna, I wanna process everything, get it all done, and then turn it over to my parents and my brother and let them figure out. That's what I want to do, but I, is that gonna, that's not a, it's not a...
Then, and I'm not offering legally.
No, no, I don't mean, I, it's like, you told me this has to be done. I know, it, it makes a lot of sense, I don't...
Right, so, say, say to you, I, this, this is a, a deal between two landowners.
Yes.
Okay?
This, this you, yes.
Okay, go, go, you can approve the A and R, all right? And you can go and say, look, it's your problem.
But that is picking up down up my side, I need it.
Or you have an opportunity to expend whatever you need to expend to change this.
Right, okay.
So that you still have a valid lot.
Yes.
You have the frontage, you have sixty...
Four thousand.
Four thousand and some.
Yeah.
I can't do the math right now.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you need sixty thousand for this to be a buildable lot.
Yep.
Sometimes the answer is, is...
Yeah.
You know, this, I don't know what size lot.
Sixty, just sixty.
This one's just sixty?
Just sixty, almost exactly.
Okay, well, that sort of gives me a visual reference then.
That's not gonna make it.
No, I don't think so.
Well, it's a little bit wider than me.
Well, you know, this is two feet wide.
Good, yeah, it's, it's close.
So if you decide to sell this to your brother, then what you're really doing is just sort of removing...
Yes, that's what I...
So you could come back in with a new plan and remove that hard line and combine.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a simple, simple operation for, for Tony.
And he's got a lot of value, because someday he is gonna take this out of you, he'll go. So he takes it out of there and then maybe at that point, he's, you know, I don't know, he'll do that, I don't know, that'd be high.
Right, you're right, you know, I was out there today looking.
Yeah, that thing, that thing is, is pretty, pretty...
Yeah, I know, but, but your point about that, this, this driveway...
It's all out there.
You know, and it didn't show on the plan, it's not that you mentioned.
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's plain and plain.
Yeah, so, so we'll, so it's, so I, I'll do that, if that's okay with everybody?
We'll take that back and then, yeah, come back in with another plan?
No, you're gonna approve it and then I'm gonna, then they, then somebody else will find it besides me.
Sure.
I hope, and you hope too.
But then, then you'll have this zoning violation.
Well, okay, so what I'll do is, is you have a copy of the letter, and we'll give you a copy of the letter.
Okay, okay, oh, sure, sure.
That's easy, okay.
Okay, and I can write him an official letter.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good.
But you can have this as a conversation piece, that starts it. And in the next week or so, I'll write him an official letter.
Okay, good, and I'll, I'll get this out, you know, tomorrow to let him know what's going on.
And if he needs to come in and talk to me, fine, I'll send him, you know, I'll make an appointment or something.
Yeah.
So I have the time to, to talk to him and we can walk, walk through it just like this.
Yeah, all right, that sounds perfect.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the A and R.
Second?
On a favor?
All right.
My child, my older child's picking up my younger child, she's making fun of little Pam.
She asked, I...
Okay.
Do you know why it was a little bit... Because there were different things in the book. Yeah, so I'm thinking, so I, I'm just gonna ask, is it a thirty inch?
Well, let me, let me breathe a little bit, I got some...
Date of endorsement, date of approval?
And, um...
Date of approval?
Get me, next week, I can just grab some.
Next week sometime, yeah?
And I'll walk over. And I'll walk over.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
I'll just have, I'll get another copy.
No, I have, I have a two foot.
I just sort of need to know where, I wanna see where it's going, you know, same thing, I wanna work with people to to make it work.
Yeah, I'll be in next week's office.
A and Rs of Google not required under this subdivision.
Yes, true.
I mean, it seems weird.
Okay.
So we're going in here to.
Okay, so what what it is, is in hanging, you can create lots to waste.
Yeah, I'll let me.
In a subdivision, by building the road and having funds in a proper time.
No, that's okay, yes, it's a fair.
This is a provision.
Might just have to.
But it is not a subdivision, because there is an existing road that you're having fund.
If I look at it.
So what they're certifying is that the way the road is open and passable to the public.
Okay, I see.
Here's the second plan. Off of Dodge Lane.
So Bill and I went out today, cause he didn't know about this road.
Yeah, it's it's, I don't, is anything on the blue line?
It's a, it's a public road.
Oh, Dodge Lane, yeah, I get a problem out here too at some point, there's a, this is a big issue right here.
It wasn't clear to the surveyor what that.
It's not clear to anybody what's going on, this, according to the surveyor, and other than the deeds, this guy here owns all this, cause the road got moved, you know, the road got moved.
Oh yeah.
Then they told us we were gonna get all this and we had to give, had to give some of this, my parents, and then everything was, nothing was done, nobody cared, nobody issued, but nothing was done legally, so now there's this big strip here. And then this park in front of my house here, which belongs to this guy across the street. So who knows what'll ever, because it's never been, never been dealt with, taken care of or transferred.
Way back when, when the road got moved, Merrill moved the road, probably with Merrill, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, uh, uh, yeah. Yes.
Okay, and they made a deal.
They made a deal verbally, all verbally, yeah.
Made a deal. All verbally, there you go, okay.
And they worked fine, you know.
Yeah, okay, so so this guy, this guy, this, there's some, yeah.
Well, well, cause the road used to be here, so his land always went here.
Right.
The land always went there, and it still does.
Yeah.
It never got changed.
So maybe the old people that made the deal, are they around to remake that, put it in writing?
Yeah, I'll go, we'll go over to Westridge and we can go talk to them.
Of course.
I don't think.
So anyway, let's talk about the the A and R plan, so this plan creates a new lot, which goes down somewhere in Muggin Hill Road. Has run a joint Dodge Lane, I'm going with that, I'm sorry, it's still on, it's on there. So Dodge Lane is a public way, always kind of gravel, narrow windy sort of country road, not really windy, but it's a narrow road. Uh, there is access into this, building a portion of the lot off Dodge Lane, so it appears to perform, it's got a sufficient area, over a hundred seventy five feet of footage, and has adequate access on the public road.
My my parents live here, this is, there's a house in a barn.
I think.
No, that, does it say Powell's?
That says Powell.
Yeah, no, they live here, everybody here.
There's a house.
Yeah, there's a house in a barn.
The surveyor said this lot didn't have a house on it.
Yeah, there's the whole idea, better than the house on her, they wanted a place to stay.
When we drove.
So this is, this is the people that live in the yellow house, did you drive down and said the yellow house, this is them, and you didn't drive by a house?
We did, yeah. Okay. We did.
Yes, this is, this is them, right, this is their.
Okay, but go. So that's also on this.
Remember Dodge Lane, or the word itself doesn't show?
Yeah, it doesn't, it shows as a word.
Put it on there, so.
So somehow, the line of the road didn't act.
Oh, so this, okay, alright, let's see.
Should I just get my mulcher?
No, is this, is the Powell house you're saying?
Um, uh, I don't, I don't, yeah, I think so, yes, yeah, yeah, cause they have a barn, plus a street too.
So why didn't he show the buildings on, is that?
He should have.
No.
He showed them on the other one. So then why are you creating some of this lot, more contained house?
They own, because they own, they own all this, all this, they own all this.
Show me, can you show me on this?
Oh yes, I can, alright, just let me see where I am here.
Sorry.
Good, that, you're tackling.
Okay, so they own this, all this, they own all this right now, okay, and 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 actually, and I live here, and my brother lives here, this is the, this is the brother lot, this is the lot that we're.
This is what we just looked at.
We just looked at, this, my brother, so this, all this land, I'm gonna purchase this from them, and they're gonna live in this, they're gonna have this right here. This is the lot, so this is where they live now, so this is gonna be their lot, she has a fortress and stuff, she's right here, and and that's what all is gonna happen on this land, and then this land is, she wanted a couple lots to sell, so.
So she's creating, she's gonna put a house up with this house.
She's just, she's just making herself a lot.
Except, right, except, except, but she wishes, oh, he is and has been for a long time, so that's what they want, she's saying.
And all the requirements are met?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. I'd like to make a motion to approve the A and R.
One second.
On my favor?
Aye. Family stuff is all. Yeah. That's why I don't know, that's on his shoulder. Probably his family.
Yeah, that that house conforms to setbacks.
Yeah, because that's another question.
I mean, what, I mean, that's, it is, that was figured out a little time ago, right?
No, because you, this is a new lot.
Oh, that, now that's, well, you can go look, it's way down. You can go look, you can go look, I think, I think there's a flag and everything in that, so the barn is here and the house is over.
Yeah, but we shouldn't have to go in trouble.
Right, yeah, I don't, I, yeah, I didn't.
Wait, who drove, who do it?
She's.
That's stated?
Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
There's a, yeah, keep that. I'll take this out of the way, I can't.
Not mine, I have one in my pocket.
Chuck that right in there if you want to.
The town, so.
Okay.
Oh, here it is. I'm gonna do these releases first, right?
What did I forget about the seven thirty? We're seeing blue proceedro on that?
Yes.
Is it, or is it continued?
All this, the, the, um, the Cartisella Estates?
Mm-hmm.
Is it here, oh?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, next, thank you.
Was that continued?
Yes.
That was the kind of.
Yeah, funky.
We just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
Three, you just wanted a lot.
Old Spencer, old Spencer Road.
But kind of drop off, right?
Is he still in conservation on that?
Still in conservation, yeah.
So we're, that's continued?
Yes, he submitted a letter, a letter to extend until September nineteenth.
Okay.
Thank you, we should go.
Yeah.
So we'll continue that.
Do you have a motion to discontinue this to September nineteenth?
So move. I'll I'll make a motion to continue till the nineteenth, September second.
On my favor?
Aye.
So we have all these, um, sixty one A releases?
Mm-hmm. We have a bunch of them, um. And these are all, three of them are actually related to solar projects that you approved, um, the Stevens property. Um, which is, will be a solar field that, you know, they are taking out from the chapter sixty one A, the leased area of that project, which is shown here enhanced, this is a change of use. And that means that the town has the right to purchase the property if they want to and is to pay the back taxes by taking it out of the chapter. Also, we submitted this request to the, to the selectmen, the planning board has the right to comment on this, whether you think the town should exercise its right of first refusal to buy that motion.
Is there any reason why you think that the town would be interested?
Is it an ideal location for a fire department or? Or the state safety building, no?
That can be approved solar farm there and it is a plan, so he's moving ahead to build that.
So.
So we vote to, do we, we vote to release it and we don't?
To take no action, no letter of consent, yeah. If we need to recommend it, then that, why are they?
At what point do the taxes get paid, is it when the building permit is taken out, or is it, has it, have the taxes been paid under?
Yes, it would have to be paid, no, no.
Upon the official.
It would have to be paid before they can get a building permit, I believe.
But that's not a responsibility of this board to make sure it happens.
We just are making advisory recommendations. This is going to a new board's, um.
Do we, do we send it to assessors or something, I thought we, do we, if we, when we approve the release, do we send a memo to assessors?
Yes, yes. I believe it goes to the selectmen, so the letter actually went to the selectmen, the assessors, the state forest, or the water and tourism commission, the planning board, conservation commission, um, and the state forest, or any of the other. The second one is another, uh, solar project up on, uh, Brookfield Road, this is the Mitchell property.
Could we just vote on that?
So, is that Mitchell, or is that?
Yeah, we didn't go on any.
That was Steve, uh, Stevens.
We need to vote on that last one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to take no action on the sixty one eight release on the, uh, just did the Mitchell one on Brookfield Road, right?
Yep.
Yep.
That was the Holborn Road Stevens.
Oh, is it Holborn Road Stevens?
Right, is that, oh, just, so we're out of order.
Okay, okay, alright, so I'd like to make a motion to take no action on the sixty one eight possible release on the one oh seven Holborn Road, second.
On my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this is, I guess, the Mitchell property, um, I guess this is on the agenda, so this. Property, so this is the leased area, for the solar field that you approved for.
This is Brookfield?
Yes.
This is, this the one that's already built, or is this the new one?
No, the, the lot extends all the way down to the river, but this is the site of the solar farm, so this is where the change of use will take place, conversion from agricultural to solar field, so they are removing this from sixty one A. It's six, uh, twenty one point, um, one four acres.
Does hunting gets Gerald, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Can I make, make a motion that you take no action, approve the release?
Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
Um, adjacent to that property, as you may recall, there were two, two sites adjacent to each other, this is on a different lot, this is, um, JM, JM F and B. It was an existing home here, I believe. It was in there with lab rail, it was up to home here, I think it was, it was from a Google?
Yes.
And this is the site of a solar field, uh, on this property being built by the same company, zero point, and all that, and this is. A request to take out twenty two point zero acres, um, for this solar project, which is the leased area.
I'd like to make a motion to take no action.
Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
And then finally, we have a property on, um, King Road, which is under chapter sixty one B, which is a recreation statute. Um, they're proposing to, uh, create a house lot, and they want to remove a portion where the house will go, it is. Shown on the plan. So this shows the entire lot, and they are removing, um, enough area for the house and the driveway, removing the rest of the lot in chapter sixty one B. Um, so this sixty one is where.
Sixty one B is a recreation?
To be removed. Yes.
Okay.
It is eighty thousand square feet, which includes the house site, which is sixty thousand five hundred, and the driveway, which is, uh, seventeen thousand six hundred square feet. So they are proposing to remove that eighty thousand square feet, they have an offer to purchase that lot for, um, ninety two thousand five hundred dollars. So that's, would be the amount the town would have to pay if it wished to, uh, exercise its right of first refusal to acquire a portion that's being taken out of chapter sixty one B. So while the others were really just leased areas, this one is an actual sale of the house lot, with the rest of the land remaining in chapter.
King Road is if you go to Dresser Hill, take a right, go down the hill, take a left. So it's between thirty one past Dresser Hill and between King Road, it's out, out close to the Dublin Line.
Yes, there is an inset map there that shows the location of the lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's being used for recreation now, is it, is it open public land, is it?
I don't know what what the recreational use is. But it is approved by the board of assessors as a chapter sixty one B parcel.
Well, I'm thinking if it, if it's open land and it's recreational land now, we're taking that away from the town too.
It's in private ownership.
It's private ownership.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm. Essentially, you could correct this, it's not to be removed from public access, I believe.
Well, it's never had public access anyways, right, so.
But actually doesn't have their public access, but it has to be dedicated to some kind of recreational use.
That's the point, I'm questioning if it's, if it, if it's not, they just wanna sell that property and I just.
I mean, if.
But that's not our responsibility, that's the assessors' issue, right?
No, is it on the state level, which the designation?
So I'm, was almost on, in the process of writing a synopsis of chapter, um, cause the board of selectmen had asked some questions about that. Because of some missteps, you know, or oversights, whatever you want to say, especially on the Gunther property, we want to make sure we have the processes in place. So there's several variations of chapter, sixty one is forest land.
Correct.
Which has to apply every ten years and have a foresting plan for it, and then there's a bunch of A, B, C's, Q's, a whole bunch of other things that are agricultural and recreational and some other. So they have to apply annually with appropriate documentation, renew their chapter status annually before the board, before the board of assessors, so how the board of assessors have.
Okay.
Designated this as.
Recreation.
Recreational land, or how that applicant has put forth sufficient documentation to be recreational land, I don't know.
It could be bringing the dirt bikes up there and, 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 you know, so it could, it could be anything.
So.
They have to get you that information for the next meeting if you want it.
We're saying that they have a, they have a, a, an offer to purchase, so they're, they're gonna, they're gonna sell it, and they're taking it out of sixty one A because they're not, they're, they're build a house versus use recreation or something like that.
So in that case, could they just take that portion where the house is and then the driveway, or would they have to remove that whole lot from?
Well, the house and the driveway have to be removed from the program because it's not recreational anymore.
Sure.
And you have to have at least a minimum area for the district.
Sure.
Uh, out of the, um, the larger portion.
Okay.
So if we, if we think that the town should match that offer and and build a big old park or something, I'm, I'm being, but just saying, we would vote to, to push it to the selectmen to think about it. That's what our job here is to say, do we think that there's use in our, in our inland planning to to future the.
Is it a potential spot for another high school at some future date, do we have other, no?
Not enough space, it's, it's not that, it's.
What does goody as an idea either?
Eighty thousand square feet is, is what, an acre, is a two acre, is it gonna have?
Forty, forty, eighty thousand, eighty thousand and change is two acres.
Do we want more information, or do, I'm not sure we need it.
I'd like to make a motion to take no action.
Second.
On my favor?
Aye.
The selectmen certainly still have the ability, if they want, if they want, you know.
Oh, they can, yeah. If they wanna build us a soccer field?
Buy it, then they can, and exercise the right.
Yeah.
I think you're saying from a planning perspective.
We don't see any, we don't see any use for it.
That's what it is, if it was like a great property that we think that, like, if it was an area downtown and we could really use it for parking for downtown, we could, something like that.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
So we'll go through the discussion, do we wanna do number one first, or do we wanna?
I think before, we should probably sign the definitive subdivision plan before this track.
Yeah, we'll get that done.
Okay, okay. That is.
It's the Mylar's.
Yep.
So you've approved this, the definitive subdivision plan, um, the notice was filed with town clerk, twenty day appeal period has expired, so that means you can now endorse all of the sheets on this plan, so it can be reported with the next three deeds. So each of these sheets should be required, or should be signed.
Is he picking that up to my favor?
I won't be surprised.
Okay. They're all in different, they're all in different places.
Always of that.
But the signature block is all in different places.
Yes.
What's, what do the rules say? Must be in the lower, left-hand corner?
Yeah, why don't we make that, make that a rule?
How many signatures do you need for this one?
Three.
I don't know how you want that script.
I don't know, I'll figure it out.
You seem to have a system there that, that was working.
Well, the title blocks are all in the same corner.
Oh, alright.
Do you want me to roll it up too, Joe?
Yeah.
But this is sharp, I could get a Mylar cut.
Do you want me to go with the? We wanna talk about, let's see, the Sims property?
Yeah, sure.
For the zoning?
Okay.
We'll just go in order.
Okay. There is a new, well, there are the Sims property, well, the way it is, it's up on Route twenty, by the Strivers Line.
Yep.
On the north side of Route twenty. Um, the new owners command the, intends to put in some kind of a light manufacturing facility. I believe he makes, uh, like he uses some, something similar to that. Mostly in assembly kind of operation, I think there's any industrial processing that will go on. And it's currently his own, uh, residential, um, so his use is not allowed in the property. And he was.
They're up their way all the way out here in R forty.
That's the Sims, you know, the gym back down?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, no, I do, I was just looking to see what the zoning was there.
So there are a couple of options. He can submit a citizen's petition, come in and ask the town to rezone that, that property. The planning board could sponsor that zoning protocol. Or I'm wondering if you would like to sort of look at that portion of Route twenty and sort of develop a view of what's going on there.
It's residential right now?
Well, it is residential because there are apartments back here, right, these are.
Yes. The Uppam, Uppam Con, Uppam Hill condos are back there.
Yeah, their houses are, are hand moving new back here, so this is.
And there's a new road that went in there, Uppam Road.
This is already a residential area.
Right.
So it's, it's.
His property could be just rezoned, kind of raised the question of spot zoning because of one, one individual property.
Yeah, that's.
But it borders, it borders twenty.
Yes, it's at twenty, the other side of the road is industrial.
So, and it's already.
And industrial across the road is industrial.
Right.
And it's already.
So we, we, basically, we'd be extending this industrial land over into this property.
Correct.
So what, if it's not technically spot zoning, is it then?
Well, one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a fuzzy area.
You're taking, you're, you're taking what is residential for these people that have been considered residential, the condos that they bought, and you're changing that.
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't change.
You don't have to change.
No, 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 no.
I might look at Route twenty.
Just because it's already a business and what's gonna, I mean, I mean, unless someone's gonna knock that down and build a house with their, with their front, looking at, looking at Route twenty.
Well, once you rezone it, it's laid industrial now, but once you rezone it, anything could go into this.
Well, be careful, please be careful about saying that.
Well.
The zoning bylaws specific is what can go into what zone.
What is he looking at to change it to?
What I meant was anything that is, is allowed in an industrial zone could go in.
Industrial general.
And it's currently R forty.
So it is currently a pre-existing non-conformity. So his other option, and, and in the history, this is, this part, this area has come to Alan and me before and various people have said, well, we wanna rezone this, we wanna rezone that. So there's a, a old colonial house to the right of that driveway.
Yeah.
And people have looked at that for various, um, non-residential activities. And we've always pointed them at each other and says, get together so that you get a bigger zone, so it isn't just an individual property, but nobody has followed through on that. And so that's a consideration. They can, and they have talked to me as a zoning enforcement officer.
They, me the butters?
No, the owner, the owner of Sims, I don't know what his name is, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no, no.
Robert Evans.
Okay, Mr. Evans. Um, about a change of use through a special permit through the zoning board of appeals, which allows a pre-existing non-conformity to change, alter, extend, provided the zoning board of appeals has a finding that the change use or whatever is no more detrimental to the neighborhood. So his case would be, is that I'm not doing anything that's, you know, obnoxious. There's already a non-conforming use there, I'm not gonna build jet plane engines there, it's not gonna offend the neighborhood, it's not gonna be detrimental.
Yep, yep, yep.
So he has that, that right, and because the Sims has not been closed for two years yet, okay, that pre-existence has not extinguished.
So he could technically go in.
He needs a special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
And, and who would he want to do?
Change, alter, extend, you know, provided he can offer proof that it would be no more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Certainly less traffic. Probably because of movement.
I'd actually prefer to see that, of course, taken prior to any zoning, uh, uh, board, just because zoning's permanent.
Yeah, it always goes with you.
Well, I. For all practical purposes, it's permanent, it's not gonna get switched back, whatever's gonna go with it. And that just opens it up for other things such as gas stations or, I don't know.
Do we have some, on this map right here, so where, what, what's, what's all the surrounding of?
It's Durbridge and the, uh.
They got the entrance for the state police barracks to the Pike.
Uh, well, that's, yeah, that's.
Right after.
That's close by, right there.
So.
This is all industrial.
This, this I G is what we would call the Techman Building, now the J D R Building, okay, the big red building. Um, nothing, state police barracks, driveway is up in here. Curving road, like I said, there's that colonial house there on the hill there, set back a little bit. And that, the building that we're talking about, then you have this industrial general land over here that has, um, the, uh, coptic, uh, Assembly's a God Church.
Yep.
Um, over in, yeah.
Where you have your concrete.
The old concrete plant and, you know, a, 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 a big, big piece of swamp.
And there is a residential in here too, right there.
That's a, that's a church.
That's the church.
Well, I see, yeah, there's a little bit of R forty that for some reason jumps across the street. If you can explain that, you can explain to me why there's this little chunk back over here that isn't community business. Um, this is Green Boys Landscaping, there's a site plan approval for that, they've cleared that.
Yep.
This piece of I G here is Kid Power Gymnastics, which has started work. Um, there is a proposal, initial proposal, we've seen for a little gray box for rent. Retail restaurant, a really nondescript, was it like five or seven thousand square feet, I don't remember, or something like that. And then there's a condo project, and then you have, you know, the old, old, old area, June for Hill Apartments here.
It's hard to, you know, our, we have our original, um, master plan and we, we, we try to make decisions to, to keep in, in line with that. You know, I think that we should look, take a look at that again, so.
Good, turn here to the door, yeah.
So however, there's, I think there's an overall, um, feeling that we should keep, we, we want businesses here and we want productive businesses to kinda keep twenty to businesses. And, and R forty probably isn't the best thing to have on twenty, just because we have all our houses, we hope. So I don't wanna.
On the other hand.
And disregard it.
Yep.
Um, I mean, obviously the applicant can go to the censors and go to the town meeting, but, um, for us to not take a, we need to have, you know, you know, the plan, but we need to have an opinion on this, so.
Man, I think the whole Route twenty corridor could, you looked at, from the reasons that you indicated, what parts are zoned residential, don't make sense today, and I'm like, maybe you can do rezone.
I, I certainly feel more.
Sure, but unfortunately, there's already existing residential there, so you're, you're impeding on what they thought as residential and assumed was going to be residential.
Yeah. You wouldn't rezone that. There are a number of abandoned homes along Route twenty, which.
That could definitely get rezoned.
Yeah, obviously, it's not desirable, but those locations.
Yeah, I agree. Yep, but this is kind of off and in the back a little bit. I don't know, I mean, this is woods, if I remember right here, this is all wooded, on the side.
Big swamp in there.
I would prefer to see them go the route with the zoning board of appeals first, and then maybe they could bring it forward as a decision.
I always like, he goes like a non-conforming, like I just always wanna fix it and, and permanently fix that twenty.
And zone it properly.
And, 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 and fix all the random things that we have going on in this town. Um, and I, I haven't been up there for a really long time, I'd love to take a, take a.
Back to the movies and on your way to the movies.
Well, I mean, we don't need to take action on that, all right?
Yeah, I don't wanna, let's, let's.
No, I just wanted to give him some guidance in terms of what, what you're.
Let's talk about, I would feel a lot more comfortable.
Take a look at it and maybe do a pop.
If, if he had some butters, if he had more people that said, oh, let's, let's, let's do a bunch, I'd feel, I'd, I'd say, let's, let's make a commitment.
Right.
If you wanna have, you know, see if that's, well, does that, that make sense?
Right.
Said I wanna, I, I think we need to have some, we need, we need to have business, we need to have, um, well, there are industrial, industrial kind of allows the, the most, and, and obviously. We have to be careful, but we don't wanna drive business, businesses away and keep this non-conforming stuff, it kinda, to me, it doesn't, that's, let's, let's.
We, we should look at how this is, these lots are broken up in here too, I think, yeah, that's, that's important, it's impossible, isn't it?
Because there's a.
Well, the car, how far back, does it go, all the way back to the, the Pike?
Yes, that, that road, that's shown there is the access road to those apartments or condos.
What's on this side, is this property, this is a zone all the way back to that?
No, just a little bit on the corner of Route twenty and the town line.
Yep.
And past that is the.
So that's my question, is what other, what else is here for, for lots, and I, and then we wouldn't have to rezone that.
Nothing else that would make sense to rezone.
Is there, other than, is there any other options other than industrial that would make it conforming?
Community business?
Like, see, I, I just don't.
I don't know that he can do that in community business, but I mean, if you talk about a Route twenty corridor, those kinds of.
Cause I just, I don't want someone to put up a gigantic, if we, if it's, if it's industrial, and someone to put up a big factory in front of the condos that are already.
I think you should also have to work, uh, think about this, when you have that zoning that use for the setbacks coming to free.
Right.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot, I think, you know, Bill, Bill wants to, you know, get a feeling from you folks, what the planning board's feeling is, which needs to be, um, no, not right now, we need more information.
Right.
You need, you need to see more, more people wanting to, to make that change along there so it looks, it makes sense, and then the sensitivity to, um, the existing residents behind it. You know, and then when, if and when it was changed to the appropriate zone, so it doesn't allow for something, um, less desirable next to those residential.
Right, exactly, cause industrial kind of scares me that, you know, put up some again, but.
But there are some additional, with, and we're I G, we know that because we're working with, uh, well, zoning board and planning board, um, worked with Mr. Pucci and Ms. Pucci for their property. Cause it is an I G zone and there are some additional setback requirements because it's an I G zone, however.
It's intended for industrial.
It was, and, and this board actually wrote a letter to the planning board saying, you know, when I G was formed, it was, we were looking for more heavy industrial use and we wanted to screen at this particular use of a gymnastics studio was certainly not a factory. So it went through that process and the same thing will happen with this other piece, um, that you were mentioning, that we heard some, some other stuff, so.
Yeah, let's, um, so we're kind of open to possible, to more information, um, if all.
I think the board's purpose is really to try to prove the U B A group now.
And if, and if, um, definitely something to look at the future, cause it kinda, we wanna follow our master plan and, you know, take a drive up there to kind of remind ourselves that it's been a long time.
Yep, yep, yep. Yep, yeah, like I said, the zoning board planned out and, and would give us more time to, to look at that area and see how it fits into the master plan. Use a, a larger portion of it.
So we'll put it on a, we'll look more into it, if he, again, if he has other butters that wanna kind of join in, I'll feel more comfortable.
Okay.
Um, and maybe something that's not industrial, um, that would, you would, they'll still be, you know.
Okay.
Uh, you, you can either, or have them to be, so what else would fit?
B D C. Okay.
So a B E P or something like that would, would work, it makes sense to have on twenty.
Okay.
Too many lists here, very many. So, um, did we, did, did, I would like to push the, um, the job applications out while we have, I like to have a whole board here to discuss job applications, if that's what you want, everybody.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Get the packets today, this week.
Just a question, how much longer is that being advertised?
It's gonna keep going.
It's gonna keep going?
And have the.
Till Phil, hey.
I assume these candidates have been contacted, we have your information, thank you for submitting it, we're, we're still.
Jessica's.
She is communicating with them.
Yeah, she's still going through the normal time portion process and all the good.
I haven't been so busy, but I, I, we all, I, I haven't even read all of them, I only, I've only went through one of them and what's come from here.
Absolutely.
Would you like to?
Yeah, no, no, that's.
Do something in addition to just, um, coming together for next meeting, which is in September?
Um, no, don't we have another August meeting?
No.
Oh, no, no, okay.
One, 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 sorry.
So would you like to wait and see what else comes in?
Yeah, and then, well, I know, how's that agenda, is that absolutely?
By September fifth, or? Um, we, we can do that.
I'm just. Um.
This expression.
I can, um.
I, you gotta make, the, the, the kid story says, you know, the car, you move the car, you gotta make it.
Yeah, no, yeah, I hear ya.
Let's, let's all, um, will you, will you just send a reminder email to all of us to, to review for the next meeting and we will have a.
We could have a working session if you'd like.
I was gonna say, do you wanna have a special meeting to go through, cause it, it's something that we can, prior to the, the, the fifth of September? It just seems like we keep kicking this can down the road and it's pretty important.
Yeah, let's, let's maybe.
We could have a subcommittee of two if you like.
No, we are ahead of that, right?
Yeah, listen, me and Alicia last time, um.
Well, not, not for this.
Which doesn't require a public, then a public meeting, so.
Yeah, so we'll just get together and, and kind of, um, so one of I looked at was, was not, did not have a planning background, so I, I just.
That was the, yeah.
Yes, well, um, let's, do, do I have work meeting with me, if you're here, is that, is that okay?
Sure, yeah, yeah, like take a look at it and just.
We can, and we can, we can. Even if we email that and whatever, so, so we can, like, perfect.
Get some opinions going forward, so that we can. We can make some process, some progress, I'm sorry.
So Don and I will, okay, just, um, screen these.
So why don't you work out a time and then.
Sure, anytime, but not next week, unless you wanna come to the capable.
That's fine.
Are you ready yet, is that, are you ready yet?
What's that? No. Well, then welcome.
My whole family's on vacation and at the beach right now.
Got a lot of company.
You guys can just call me, just call me.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just work it out.
Okay.
Um, do we have the, can I, can we, the five oh eight, um, modification approval decision?
That's just Jenny enough for you.
All right, just for that, um, did everybody get the letter from Amy Stanley?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And is there, it's, it seems as though it's kind of out of, in, in my opinion, it's out of our realm of that, so we've done our, we've done our thing. Um, and I, I probably got involved a little, um, deeper with, um, the little trade incident that I probably should've, um, but I was trying to solve a, a, a problem, you know, when, when your neighbors dislike each other, it's just kind of a deal.
No, you're trying to resolve. Yeah, yeah.
So, I think, we don't have to go any, any, any even deeper here, um, in the issues, border health, um, the selectmen, well, he had, he had these kind of issues too, so, um.
Yeah, I, I think now it's in the border health's hands for, for monitoring for, for, you know, place days or event days and, and making sure that, you know.
Um, this is, this is a long list, a bunch of complaints, but let, let the right departments, um, handle it and.
Yeah, I think, you know, you've made your decision on the five oh eight modification, so it's really outside of the site plan review process now.
Mm-hmm.
And it's one of an operational issue, if there's a complaint on traffic, it should go to the, to each department, if there's a complaint on noise protocol or health.
Right, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
So, whatever comes up, I think should be directed to the appropriate area.
Yeah, of course, if there is something that affects us, then, you know, we will, we will, um, handle it.
Right, it comes here, but. Right.
As, as, as needed, all right. All right. Um, for everybody's information, there is a conflict of interest law seminar on Tuesday, September eighteenth, um.
If this is a contact to me.
We are urged to attend, um, so if anybody is interested, um, I get to sit through a lot of these, um, for work.
Is that daytime, nighttime, or is it both?
It is.
Both.
Are they both, okay.
Three to four thirty and six to seven, another work.
Have you ever been contacted by a conflict, taking training, conflict of interest training?
Um, that's the video, right?
Yes, that one.
Yes, it's in our line.
Yeah, we had to do it anyway.
Yeah, we all, we all had to do it.
Like every two years, you need to do that, so.
And you guys sent us the reminder, we just, I just did it last, we did, you know, cause I complained because I already had to do the, do it for work and I did twice. I'm super informed about conflict of interest.
Bring the certificate in.
They wouldn't take it, it's, it's, the trainings are slightly different, so I must be wrong.
Oh, because stayed in Blazer.
Different than town and.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, did I miss anything, let's just do.
Get a.
Okay, so, the marijuana, I, I wanted to add on to the agenda, the marijuana zoning, um, obviously, this'll, um, we all kind of believe that we approve something different and it was, it was just the, the situation that we're in. The, the, the big thing in my mind was getting, getting the salary back for the planning director, that was my focus, I think everything else kind of, um, felt its side. Um, so we need to take a look at that and I hope that's the take, to, um, have some discussion over the next couple of meetings and then make sure that we have time to actually have a public in, you know, formal, public, open meeting, so we can, we could formally get everybody's, um, opinions on record and so we can go to the fall meeting recommending, um, recommending a, a change. So, um, we just make sure that we have the, the timing down, so we'll be able to make it to fall meeting, whatever, um.
Have they set a date yet?
Not that I've heard of.
But I know there's timing.
It was easy October. Special events, usually.
Cause then we have to have our meetings so far, you know, ahead of whatever the, the, the timing is, so just make sure that we, we do that, so we don't, you know, we don't miss it.
Yes.
So is, is the thought to look at the existing bylaws and, or to start over, or?
Let's, let's, um, so, I, I understand that, um, we, we haven't got a formal approval from the AG that, that are, the one that was voted on is kind of done, so we're gonna ignore all of that, right, and just go with what we, what we think it should be, let's, because potentially we would go to the fall town meeting with, this is what we want and it didn't, it doesn't matter what, the, if the AG
Who's allowed, that we could, we could, we could come up with a.
Oops or not, we would go with something, if that makes sense?
But I think on modification. I mean, I think it's easier to look at what we've got, or not.
Oh, yeah, 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 let's, we, oh, no, we don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
For example, would be GSPs.
Yep.
Oh, no, no, exactly, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that we should start from the beginning, right? Um, take what we have and, and, um, go from there, now. I know we have, we have people that wanna make comments and even though this isn't, you know, a, a, really a hearing, a public hearing, as the, as the chair, I'm gonna allow a public comment because we wanna start everything in a good, and we wanna know what everybody has, all the sides, and we wanna modify this so we're protecting the town.
Yep.
And, um, we're keeping in line to, to the, kind of, how we feel Charlton should be, I mean, even though we're changing this twice in a year.
Sure.
This is a normal thing, this should be, be going forward, um, the way we want to be, um.
That could, we have a couple of options, we can change the table, we could also come up with, with an overlay district, if there's, if that would suit the purpose too, so it's, we can do things like that too.
And, and I.
To limit it, not just to, you know, one certain district, but, you know, a certain area of that, of that district, so, you know, like right now, it's, it's open to all agriculture, which means
No, and I think we should definitely.
Maybe five percent of the town, but, you know.
Right, that's.
Ten, well, okay, so that's four percent of the town, you gotta look at, at practically any neighborhood in, in here.
Which is put on all the information.
Okay, okay, okay. So, I mean, if there was something that would make sense in an agricultural district, in a certain area, that somebody already has a plan to, when it's non-disruptive for, for the community, that's an option.
So, we all have this as a base, we all have the, the one, I think everybody has it in their packet too, the, the, the one that went to town meeting? It's a, it's a good, the format is the format, and I think we can all start, cop, you know, bring, bring our ideas to the table, um, and again, hear what the residents of Charlton in general, um, look, what we want. Um, I have a couple of emails that came to my account for, um, with concerns. Now, I'm not sure if I wanna sit here, if I wanna, if I should read these, if, I mean, they're lengthy emails, I could, um, I would like to, over the next couple of meetings, have, have.
So, we can compile on a, on a, on a separate document, some of the concerns and issues and, a lot of those are probably all the same?
And I should have done that, I'm. I just, I opened my email to, to hit these and I, I'm on vacation this week, really, I drove up from the meeting, so we would have form, so I just, I'm normally, I would have kind of summarized these, but in general, I have.
Sure, sure, sure.
Well, just, you know, as, sort of, procedural matter, I think, comments should not really go to one individual, it should really come to the planning office.
No, and I will, and all.
I agree, I agree.
We can compile them all and make them available for the public, um, so that through all of one separate location, we've got a record of where everybody has comments and.
So, we'll make, just, so it's on record, if people could, um, at least, if you're gonna send an email directly to one of us, which is fine, we, we all, um, are here for that reason, then if you could also copy, um, Jane, um, on the emails, just so in case one of us misses them, or goes in the junk mail or something like that, so all the voices are here, heard. I have, I'm just gonna do like a basic, I have, um, an email from Brett Moore, um, from Hammerock Road, um, and the big, true concern was the, the water, and I will get this to Jane so she can forward all these, um, so we can read them at home, but the big thing was the water and I, we've heard about that and, and that's clearly something that will, will be brought up, um, many times. I have an email from Charlene Del Cito, um, the and it's really about the zoning, um, how having a, the, a big manufacturing, you know, marijuana facility in, in a, in this agricultural zone, which I, is already a huge concern, and again, I'll, we'll, we'll compile these so we can kind of get the bulk of the comments. I have, um, a, a school committee member, Mary Intachi, did I say that correctly, is that right? Um, who is just, and, and this is one of my concerns also, is talking about the buffer zone between schools and daycares and fall fields and that kind of stuff, and I do agree, I think that the buffer zone is a little, um, light in the air, and that's something that will, will really be a big discussion piece. Um, from Elizabeth Moran, um, it's about buffer zones and, um, daycare schools, um, same, same deal, and other, um, about packaging amount of retail, so again, but they, these will all be compiled, I just wanted to make sure I got some of the names on record. Kristen Castigian, um, a, opinions on the, the bylaw itself, um, buffer zones, um, cap of, of retails, um, cap cultivators. So, I can take some public comments, um, this, it says it's not a formal hearing, it's just kind of, uh, open discussion and we want it, cause we want the residents all to, you know, chime in and be more involved and we want this to be, uh, an open process, so, um, please just state your name and your address for the record, so we can.
I'll go first, Ken Howard, Olester Road, um, this stuff is all new to me, so I don't know if, you know, maybe it sounds like anyone asking us, but I was, I was looking online one night killing time, and I, I'm looking at all the different land uses in Charlton, you know, for what, you know, like, I'm in village districts, I'm looking at, you know, what's a lot of my village district and so on and so forth. And I, I saw around here that it says medical research and development is no in all categories except the business part. So, if some of these places that wanna do marijuana, they do it medically, is, isn't that, doesn't that mean they can't do it?
That's a zoning issue and, um, I think that.
Wait a second, I'm not sure. If you're one of these things I go to, it's in the way, say, no, you shouldn't ask this here, you should ask it there, I don't know, it's kinda new to me.
So, um, the process is that they had to go to the selectmen and get their, um, sale approval, kind of their letter of support, um, and then the, the, um, zoning enforcement officer has to determine whether it's, it's, the, the, the use is appropriate, um, and then, kind of, once that's determined, it comes to us.
So, but, you know, marijuana has its own statute, so it's considered a separate land use, so that's why we had a separate bylaw to regulate that. So, the marijuana bylaw specified districts where that kind of a research use could be regulated to marijuana, um, which is different from other medical uses, which, um, the zoning bylaw was, was modified to allow those at an earlier point in time.
So, if I see something that says SP for, well, either permit or special permit, or if it says and, I just always assume that if you wanted to do something and it says and, game going bad, but it sounds like you could.
Well, yeah, cause it's a marijuana use, which has its own, uh, line in the use table.
So, is it specifically written in the new Article twenty-seven that marijuana research is allowed?
It is allowed by special permit.
Which is a research.
I'm sorry, the treatment, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, that's the.
It's not.
Why do you?
Because, because if you're, if you're talking specific, um, it's a cultivator? And not, and not, and not, they're not.
Well, research could have fallen under the testing laboratory?
No, that's where they actually test the product to see if it complies with previous standards.
Aren't you trying to do research on it, though, whether it complies or doesn't?
I would say, no, I don't know.
Okay, it's, it's a total, well, it's in depth, unless you're, like, strictly specific about it. I think makes it, at least, there's a lot of gray area, unfortunately.
Even with the modification of this one, this still, um, the, correct me if I'm wrong, so if we're talking, just because of your location, if we're talking DDD specific, if we're talking, like, um, that, that, that property, that's a cul, indoor cultivator, not research in, in, as far as I'm.
Well, I'm not, I'm still talking about, I'm talking about anything down the road.
So, what I think you're saying is that research should be another, uh, another use that's not addressed in our current segment, so we have no current zoning for research, medical marijuana research facilities, unless it falls under medical research.
There's also, there's also a different line in that's only, it says scientific or research labs, and that says no in R forty or agricultural. So, I, I don't know if that needs to be clarified exactly what.
I'm taking notes, so.
What is medical, what's scientific, what's research labs, I'm just thinking down the road, whether it's a year or ten years, twenty years, to.
So I guess we, you know, we have to determine whether that would fall under the definition of a medical marijuana treatment center, which has a very broad definition. So we need to know specifically what an applicant was proposing to do, to determine whether it would fall within that category, so it's kind of hard to give a hypothetical answer.
Or, or in the new zoning, add a, another business use, okay, forget the business use.
Yeah, I mean, under.
So add another business use before that.
Under establishment, it does have independent testing laboratory and independent, but it's, it's, it's a cultivator.
Yes.
That's what it is, so that's that's why it's, didn't fall into that. All right, do I have?
So, my name is Kristen Castigian, I live on Carroll Hill, um, I wanna apologize, I, I didn't know to include Jane on emails and I gave out Bill and Patsy's emails to people.
Oh, that's okay.
So I apologize, I'll, I'll read.
Go for them, yeah, I would.
Well, I'll just, I'll, I'll send out another email and let people know that really, everything should be followed through Jane, and they can copy whoever else they want, but Jane is the primary point of contact for you guys, so that's my bad, I, I apologize, um, I just figured the chair and the director, but that was an assumption, that's invalid, sorry. Um, I sent an email just saying that.
And you would say, don't ever, if anybody on the board is, you know, is elected to be on the board and anybody can receive an email, so if you wanna copy everybody or one of us, it's fine, but I would just make sure that Jane is copied.
Okay.
Because, um, just in case something happens, in case one of us doesn't check our email, just, just in case, I'm, I'm obsessed and I check it on a constant basis.
Sure. Will do, sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry about that.
So, I, I just sent a couple of recommendations, um, for if you guys amend the bylaw or if you start over, I, I don't know what route you go, but I basically thought that all types of marijuana business should be restricted to business zones, like the industrial zone for manufacturing, the community business zone for retail, um, that would sort of mimic the rest of the county, um, and then I also thought that, being that Charlton is an enormous town acreage-wise, um, we don't really need to stick to the state minimum for the school buffer zone, we could come up with something that's a little bit more reasonable and fits in line with our community, I mean, we could probably triple it, easy, right? And then, uh, I also asked if we could maybe cap the retail stores at two total, you know, including recreational and medical added together, um, so in total, and then also, I thought maybe they could write in a cap on the total. Um, so in total, and then also I thought maybe they could write in a cap on the total number of cultivators in Charlton, uh, separate from stores, and, uh, and a cap on the total cultivation canopy, um, that's either the same as or less than what the CCC recommends, which is a hundred thousand square feet. I don't know why we would want to allow anything larger than what the state regulation, regulation, um, outlines. Those were the, the four recommendations I sent. Thank you.
And they will be all kind of combined and put so, so we can get a general feel about what everybody wants to, to, how they want to restrict this, how they want to modify this. Do we have any other comments?
Gerard Russell, sixty-three, Olester Road. I'd just like to echo what Kristen had to say, I think a, um, limit on the canopy of a hundred thousand square feet is reasonable. What's been proposed so far is not reasonable.
So, this is just, again, to get a feel and we will be, once we, especially once we get our other board members back from vacation to really, um, get into this, our assignment is to, to kind of, um, start jotting, you know, getting some notes written and getting some feelings and, you know, top drug.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just, just so we can get a feel of what, what we want overall, um, for this town. Um, just in, so everybody knows, um, the, a new zoning will not affect the VGG proposals, so it has nothing. We're gonna, we're gonna move forward to make sure that we go in the right direction and we understand everything completely and we do what's right for the, for the town in general. That's our, that was, that's always our goal. Um, and I do believe at the town meeting when we changed to, that the, that we voted a majority to, to cap it at two in total. Um, so that's definitely something that we'll need to, you know, to keep in the back of our mind when we're des- design, when we're, um, moving forward, I believe, during our discussions. The, so let's, um, unless we have any other comments?
Robert, Robert Russell, sixty-three, Olester Road. At a previous meeting, uh, the town planner said there could be a limit on the number of cultivators, is that something that you would entertain?
Yeah, I need to verify that further, from my understanding that you could not put a limit on number of cultivators, but-
Is that state, state law?
Getting a difference of opinion on that topic, so I need to track that down. So, I, so I don't know the answer to that question at the moment.
So, you, so there isn't-
Something that you said at a previous meeting, is that?
I thought I said that you could limit the number of retail, but not the number of cultivators. I think I said kind of these-
You said that that's what the bylaw does, it doesn't limit the number of cultivators.
Okay, so, cool. Our by, our bylaw doesn't, but are you asking?
Would the state law allow it?
The state law will allow it.
Would the state law allow it? Um, because that was our intent at the, at the, um-
Two facilities.
Town, town meeting, two in total, two, two establishments, um, complete, that was what we were, what we're going for.
So, I think it's something we need to really track, not let you get a correct answer.
Can you, will you, um, ask, um, Robin to, to have our attorneys answer that question? Yes, like a yes or no answer on whether that's possible or not, just so, um, when we have that nu- information when we, um, are working on this.
I, I think that, from what I've read, all the other towns around, it's not exactly that.
I've read it multiple times, but I, but I can't, I can't, I can't dictate laws, so I, I don't know. Um, and I didn't see that you couldn't, but it, it's a bajillion pages, so I, I might have missed that, but if you will just, just clarify-
We know, we know the laws, if you can't limit the number of retail to fewer than twenty percent of the number of package stores-
Right, and, and-
In a town, but it doesn't, there's no specific language in the statute that I'm aware of regarding-
Which kind?
Any kind of cap on agricultural cultivation, so that I need to determine whether you can or not.
Is, is there terminology marijuana establishments in total?
Right.
So, if we were just black and white, yes or no answer, ask our attorneys to see what, um, because that seems kind of, I mean-
No, I think it would be good to get a definitive answer.
So, to the chair, uh, one, one problem that I think we had in the, the original bylaw that we put together is we were kind of rushed for time to get something in and done for the town meeting and pushed that in, it was only a month or so. Ahead of it, we had to go through approval, we didn't have a lot of time for public comment or feedback. It was kind of fluid up to the point where we had to approve it to get it onto the town meeting.
Right.
Um, and not realizing that it had been completely fluid to some point at that. Right now, our next meeting is September fifth. That gives us about a month before the town meeting, so once again, we're really pressed for time to get this right and get this corrected.
So, we want to make sure that we have our, 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 our open public official vote on this, right, before, in time for the meeting. So, we want a slot of time for us to discuss, and every single meeting, we need a slot of time to discuss this. Um, we need to, and we all-
Yep.
We all are expected to come back with notes and kind of know what's-
And most likely, we may have to add another meeting in September for a public hearing, once we get everything, it, it's a potential issue. Because it has to be two weeks ahead of us.
Right, whatever we need to do, we'll do to make sure we have it for, for the town meetings. We won't, we'll, we'll-
Okay.
So, let's, we have one more thing that I wanted to-
Okay, one thing, one thing. Ken Howard, Olester Road, um, again, I don't come asking a great group of people here. When these contracts are drawn up on these facilities, such as VGGs, you know, I've read the stuff about Forsco, but, so, I don't know much to go on there. Such as VGG, when, is it, you guys are what a selectman that comes up with things like saying that all the work being done building this facility and hiring, once the facility is done, is going to go to Charlton people first. And any violation of that is cause for dismissal of the contract, that's what I read on the Charlton website.
Yeah, it's absolutely, the selectmen may negotiate the contracts, they-
Who enforces that?
Well, that would probably require some kind of reporting mechanism. Uh, I assume they would go to the selectmen and, similar to, uh, tax increment financing contract, which typically requires hiring of local people in order to get a tax, uh, reduction for a extension. Sounds like you're talking something similar to that.
Well, just, you know, the local contractor's been asked to build a greenhouse, and local survey company's been asked to do the surveying. I see survey trucks on the street, and I've been out from Charlton. Just makes me want to ask.
That's, I, that's a great thing to actually go to the selectmen's meeting and ask-
Open forum.
During open forum and ask them, they would have your answer, the town administrator, um, would be the, kind of like the head person that would, you might be able to shoot, shoot an email, but even get all the selectmen involved and go, go to an o- open forum, that's what they're there for.
And I could be wrong too, because I know the stuff going on with the water, so, might not even, the trucks I've seen might have nothing to do with that project, so.
But, yeah, they're, they're-
I just wanted to ask who, who enforces it.
No, it, I, it has to be them, at least they'll have their answer for you. That's, that's, we have nothing to do with that, we're, we're, we have-
There's a lot of guys that's down that could use the work, so.
I agree and I, and I honestly don't know what the, what the contract is, I think it's, you can, it's public, I've only read little pieces, so.
So, what board?
All right, so, last but not least, we have an open, uh, meeting block and plate form, has everybody kind of prepared to see, um, it really has, it's, it's, it's the, the way that, about the posting, the, the, the hearing for the recreational marijuana bylaw amendment. We have- A response letter. Um, I don't know how we could have, and I think the response letter is great, I, I don't know how we could have really advertised better.
Yeah.
What else we would have been able to say.
It's all coming from the protocol, you know, that's the way it goes here, right?
I get it, it's, it was a sensitive matter, I didn't, I, I wasn't sure, you know, we can't really highlight it in yellow or something, um. We take these kind of seriously, we, we really, we don't like to be the board that has, you know, violations and stuff. We'll make sure in the future that we pay more attention to especially sensitive, I don't, I don't know what else we can do, I-
Uh, is, is it a question on, on the wording of the, of the advertisement, or just that the advertisement wasn't seen?
Did you get a chance to-
Well, I, I did, but, I mean, the wording says, um, as in proposal to amend the Charlton zoning bylaw to adopt zoning regulations to permit retail sale of marijuana, marijuana cultivators and other marijuana establishments by special farmers in those zoning districts. It's kind of, says it all. But, um, maybe in the future, was, was the article posted online, is, is there something we could be, could we do a better job at, at posting some of the things that are going to be discussed?
I mean, everything's kind of posted the same way, but I think at, at this point, with this particular matter, there'll be, um, lots of focus.
Yeah, and I think we should make it as, as open as we possibly can, you know.
Right, that's why we have-
Share too much information, it's kind of, not sharing enough.
Normally, we don't bring the public in for, for our just general discussions, and that's why I wanted to make sure we did, I want to make sure that everybody's involved. Um, and, and even our, our, our personal views, we really want to do what the majority of the town wants us to do, that's why we want as many people involved as possible. Um, that's why when we get these emails, we'll make sure we compile so we can get a real feel, we, we want, um, we, we truly want to do what's right-
For the town.
For the town, and this, and, and to look for the future growth. Um, and as, as we'll, the open, open, we need to discuss this. I don't know what else we can do, um, if there's suggestions on, on how we should have actually advertised it, um, we're more than willing to, to, to do.
Yeah, we need to make a motion to mail this.
Do you have to, uh, for those, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good job on it, Paul Horace, I'm very told. Now, let's make a motion that, uh, we sign and mail this letter.
Second.
Uh, David?
Aye.
Hi. Do I have your, do I have your original?
No, we all have that.
Okay.
Colored, we have the colored letterhead.
All right, there are so many things on it, did I miss anything? Did I, did I?
Well, we had a discussion here on, um, uh, called packet discussion, I wanted to, I think it comes down to sort of basic communication between this office and the board. Um, you know, before every meeting, getting pushed together a packet that gets mailed out to. So, I'd like to know if that process works for you, do you want, you know, copies of the plans that come in i- within the packet, or are you okay, just, you do them at the meeting? Do you want PDF files? How can we improve, you know, what we have and get it to you in time so that you can, you know, have an ability, if you wanted, to review things before the meeting? Um, we also thought maybe would be a good idea to put a lot of the application materials that we get online so that not only the board, but the public at large could have access to the applications-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before the hearing opens. Uh, so I'm just, wanted to just ask your thoughts about how we can improve communication with you to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're doing.
If, if, especially any of the larger ones, but clearly VGG, um, uh, like, like we do with bylaw, get everything up there. If we can have a PDF and we can simply put it up there, it doesn't cost anything, you know, just get it up on the website so everybody can have access to, um, um, everything on, on a timely basis, um, that, that, that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and I like the packet, but I would be opposed to sending it out electronically instead of in hard copy.
I get, I always think, I'm, I, I like things electronic, but I, I love taking notes, I love-
Sure, sure.
After I open it and hard copy reading it, um, it's like an old school thing. I just, I, I write on it, and I know it's a waste of paper, but it makes, it, it, it makes me do it better, I, I think, um-
I, I, I do understand that. I, I would probably print out most of it anyways, but-
Um, I, I, because I'm all, I don't, we, we waste ink and we, we paper, but we want to all come as prepared as possible. Um, if somebody wants it just electronically, if you-
I, I wouldn't want to change the method for one person.
Is it a big guilt?
It, it is kind of a-
Just, I mean, even if you scanned it all, can you scan it?
Well, we don't typically get everything electronically, we get paper.
Yeah.
So, we-
I like to scan it. I don't want to give you-
I, I don't want to go through, through extra trouble, I mean, this is, this is fine. What I said was I wouldn't be opposed to it, but this is, this is fine.
I, I want everybody to get, I, I just really like the paper. I just, I know it's a, I know it's a kind of a waste, but I feel good with paper. But definitely, anything electronic, um, that we get, any plans that can be viewed first, uh, instead of making people come in and look at plans in the office. Um, if they're submitted and they're public, then we can, we post them as soon as we can after, definitely, um, the, the next-
Do we request soft copies when we get hard copies, because a lot of, a lot of it would be easy enough for them to, to, to shoot that out?
Sure. For VGG, for example, it's going to be a very detailed application, and there'll be a lot of technical appendices that I think would be a lot of paper for people to have to print for, where they get a copy of, or if we get it electronically, you know, the website, then the public can have access to it. It'll still be available there for inspection.
Sure.
Once, when we get it.
Definitely, that's good to get out there.
I think, um, as, as, um, public, you, you guys would be happy to, it would be useful to have everything in PDF. Right, so let's, let's just make that part of our, part of our process, that, um, we just put everything up on the website as soon as we can, as soon as we can.
Jane and, and Patty, you know that my office and, you know, certainly helps support your office and support Bill with electronic stuff. You know, we have the ability to scan large format stuff, but we also can ask the applicants, and many of the applicants that Bill and I have been talking to in technical meetings are willing to, they're all, they're generating all these documents electronically as it is.
Yep, yep.
And so, for them to bring in a thumb drive that we may have to do some process to, because I'm thinking of network security, and we want to talk to Ken about that, that we make sure we scan those for viruses before we infect our network, um, but there is applications out there that do that. You know, we can do this, we can, you know, I require, my office requires that all commercial plans come to me as PDF. In addition, because I have to archive them. Okay, and when they're, rolls this big around, that's a lot of paper to, to do, but I'm the same way, I need to be able to flip through pages and make annotations and marking on them, and the IT guy hates when I highlight on the screen with that magic marker, he really gets pissed.
You just pull out a magnet and you ready to see the-
Oh, it does, oh, I'll try that. Does that work on the LED ones?
So, I think it's a win-win to, to, to do that.
Yep.
Um, it's, it gives everybody, um, you know, they get easy access, and I think that it, um, it saves our staff in general. I think the bill, uh, your office too, instead of people coming in and you have to, you know, you have to deal with people face to face, make them copies and everything else, so I think it makes sense to-
It just, it, we, part of our job is to help people, and that's fine, but if they can get the information they need at home and not have to make that trip within the hours that we're available, that, you know, certainly, I see everybody over there nodding their heads.
The other benefit of keeping it electronic is you can store it online, you can store it on Google Docs, and you can have each meeting separate package that was given out, you can always go back and look at information, and find that information, despite, finally, Kevin, our phone is getting pretty heavy right now. So, to be able to store it on Google Docs or, or something like that would be useful. Technology's there, let's use it.
Yeah, unfortunately, I really like the packet.
It's the only mail you get now, right?
You're right. Any- Anything?
Uh, I wanted to, they asked you how you wanted to run the VGG site plan application process. Um, I think it's going to take several meetings for the board to, uh, get a good understanding of the project, uh, to make comments for staff, to comment changes to be made, et cetera, for the public to understand what's being proposed, um, so-
When do we expect to have our first look at that?
Uh, it'll be submitted next week.
Next week, okay.
Uh, schedule's going for the fifth.
So, first meeting.
What about the subdivision plan?
I mentioned that to them, I don't have a timeline, I won't ever come in, but they are aware of it, that they need to do that in order to maintain your protection under the old zoning.
Yep.
So, I was like talking to Patsy before the meeting, you know, thinking we could dedicate a portion of each meeting, say an hour or more, uh, to specific, and maybe identify specific topics for each meeting, so that we don't go all over the place at each meeting.
Advertise, well, no, um, for each, for each area, traffic-
Right, that kind of idea.
Um, older, um-
Lighting.
And then it is, it is, it is little, it is a bunch of kind of, um, general, like, small things that wouldn't take a whole meeting, we can do like a, a bulk, whatever, um, whatever's kind of left out, we may miss, so.
Well, the other approach would be to have a separate meeting to go over the entire project, uh, and take, you know, three, three hours or more, whatever it takes, you know, to get through it.
We'd have, probably have several of those meetings, I would imagine.
I think we're already going to have that with the individual, to be honest with you, um, and I definitely don't want to do it for a whole entire day.
You know, if we, if we limited to an hour, we could always, uh, use a portion of that for review of, of any questions from the previous meeting and then go on new tub, new topic or something like that, fifteen minutes for, for questions from the previous meeting and then move on to new topics and get rattle.
So, and we, when we get, when you, we, when we get the plan in, um, will you have, we have them put it up online as soon as, as soon as possible?
Yes, that's for, for electronic copies of everything.
Because I know, um, I've already had, I have email requests to already, as soon as it comes in to, can, so if we can just do that, and that way everybody can draw it down, print it out, take all their notes, um.
So your, your purpose would be to weave it into existing planning board meetings and give adequate time in each meeting to address a, a discrete, or what are more topics?
I think to start off that way, and if we find that we're not making progress, then we can-
And I think it'll, I mean, if we start having meetings and it's kind of a, you know, question, we're going to get questions from here and we're going to get off kind of focus, we, if we're, if we're dealing with, um, traffic, that's going to be a big one, and let's, and have all the questions focused on traffic, um, is, is-
Let, let's start that way and see what happens, and then it-
I thought we did five oh eight, not working.
Right, and that went, you know, no, no, we, 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 the flow that, I mean-
Going good. The flow that went, flow that worked.
The personalities kind of got, you know, but we, we'll, we'll keep-
The structure part of it.
The structure part, and we'll, we'll expect everybody to be one up soon.
Yep. All right, and also-
The last thing I had was, um, decisions, you, you know, I typically draft a decision based on a public hearing and a decision from the board, and, and I usually would send it to Patsy to review, and then she'd back me, uh, where she had any comments. So, the thought is, do you want to send it to all the board members before it gets signed, or do you, um-
I don't see why not, uh, one person can miss something, she can miss something, she can overlook something, but if, if, if it goes out to everybody, they can look at it, or-
I, I normally take my notes and, and kind of just double, double check, um, my, but you can, I don't-
I, I don't think it would hurt.
You know, we can't have a conversation online about it, it's a meeting.
Yeah, so, so you can't respond, right?
Yep, you can't respond to it, but you could bring it, you could bring it back at the next meeting.
You could let me down, whatever, and anything could like change.
I don't think it hurts to, to get more eyes on it.
And then I think, you know, I would also, also like authorization, to sign it on her behalf, if Patsy's in the room, can't come in, she's on the road or something like that, if, uh, once it's been, if it's fully vetted that, I could sign it under, under approval.
Yeah, normally I stop in before work, like, um, I just was on vacation this week, and then, you know, um, just, we had a, uh, super busy Thursday, and, and without, you know, without Friday, so, um, do you want to vote for that? To allow you to sign on my behalf?
I don't think so, as long as, like, what's coming up with it, I mean, I want you to-
Yeah, it's a major, yeah.
And I sent an email to say to sign, I, I authorized, just so in case-
Yeah, I, I, I have direction.
But I have one email I'd like before I do it.
Just in case, it, it's like an auditable thing, why is, why isn't the chair signing, well, you can have an email that authorizes it.
Yep, yep, I think that's fine.
All right. No, you can, you can.
Everything, okay.
It's not ten o'clock yet.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor?